Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, City Manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
For the March 12th City Council meeting, we're delighted to have you all with us as we go about the city's business. We will begin, as we always do, by asking God's presence and blessing on these proceedings. And I'd like to ask Pastor LaVisha Williams to come to the podium. She's Presiding Elder, South Columbus Cordial District, Pastor Emmanuel Chapel CME in West Point, Georgia, West Georgia Region CME Church, Inc. I'll tell you, you've got more letters, that's your name. But we're delighted that you're here and thank you for being here.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor and all council members. Will you bow your heads, please, as we pray this morning? Eternal and all wise God, you who are the maker of all things and the judge of all men, we give you thanks and praise for all of your mighty works. And we thank you for life itself and for the grace that is needed to fulfill each of our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities that are in place to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I now pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, this assembled council. For they gather today seeking your wisdom, seeking your direction and guidance on matters that pertain to the heart of the people, but also to the heart of the community. They gather today seeking wisdom to govern responsibly in the midst of conflicting interests and issues of our times, yet for the welfare and the needs of the people. Grant them now, oh God, a thirst for justice and righteousness. I pray for the agenda that is set before them today and ask that every decision be righteous in your sight, that it may benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. May our city not only be known as the Fountain City, but also as a righteous city, one that welcomes the stranger, cares for the needy, and defends the innocent against evil doers. We ask now, God, that you will bless our businesses, our churches, our families, and individuals that make our city great. It is in your blessed name that we pray. Amen.
Pastor Williams, thank you, ma'am. And I pray that we never forget or take for granted all the pastors that volunteer their time to come up here in the morning or in the evening and to help us begin our deliberations with a message that invokes kindness to one another. So thank you for being here. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business to approve the minutes from the February 27th meeting. There's a motion and a second for approval. Any edits or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are, minutes are approved. We have a number of proclamations today. The first one will be presented by Counselor Kogle. And it is in celebration of Women's History Month. So if we've got folks here for Women's History Month, invite them to the front. Morning, ladies.
Good morning. It's my privilege to read this into the record. Whereas Women's History Month traces back to the beginnings, traces its beginnings back to the first International Women's Day in 1911. And whereas in February 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued a presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8, 1980, as National Women's History Week. And whereas in 1987, Congress designated the month of March 1987 as Women's History Month and authorized the president to proclaim March of each year as Women's History Month. And whereas we honor the contributions and achievements of women throughout history and highlight the ongoing struggles for gender equality. And whereas women have played a vital role in shaping our nation's history, contributing to every aspect of society, from politics to science to arts and culture. And whereas Women's History Month encourages us to celebrate the achievements of trailblazing women who have broken barriers and shadowed stereotypes, inspiring future generations to pursue their dreams and aspirations. And whereas Women's History Month provides a platform to highlight the achievements of women from diverse backgrounds, encouraging or ensuring that their stories and experiences are recognized and celebrated. Now, therefore, I, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month.
That's standing ovation in honor of women everywhere. Ms. Risper?
Good morning. My name is Sheila Risper. I am the Assistant Human Resource Department for the Columbus and Salida Government Human Resource Department. On behalf of Rita Hollowell and Human Resource Department, we want to thank Mayor Henderson, City Manager Isaiah Hughley, and the City Council for this proclamation. I'm gonna, we have planned, I've created a lot of events for throughout this month. And I'm gonna let Latia introduce herself and tell you about those ready plans.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Latia King. I'm the Head of Human Resources Employee Relations. Last week, we started off celebrating Women's History Month by celebrating Women's History Day, which was Friday, March 8. I sent out an email encouraging all the employees to wear purple and honor women's achievements throughout history. Also, this Friday, March 15, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., we have put together a Women's History Month program with Haley Tilery as our speaker. This will be held at the City Hall of Bradley Building at the Azalea Room.
Thank y'all for what you do to help us recognize the, this month for Women's History. And we appreciate it. If y'all would come around, let us shake your hand and thank you. As a girl dad with a sister and a, used to have a wonderful mother, we're all very appreciative for women everywhere. So thank you for that. All right, next, Counselor Allen, Mayor Pro Tem. He will make a, present a proclamation for World Down Syndrome Day.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to publish this proclamation as they come forward. And it reads as follows. Whereas Down Syndrome is a genetic disorder affecting one in over 700 babies or approximately 6,000 births per year in the United States. And whereas occurring from an individual having a full or partial extra copy of chromosome number 21, Down Syndrome is a naturally occurring chromosomal arrangement and is one of the most common chromosomal conditions. And whereas at one time in our history, people with Down Syndrome were stigmatized or are all too frequently committed to institutions. Now, they are benefiting from important advances in research, education, and healthcare. Individuals living with Down Syndrome are independent, valuable, and active members of our communities who are dignified participants in a wide range of educational, occupational, social, and recreational activities. And whereas, beginning in 2006, on March 21 of every year, the United Nations invites all member states and some of its important bodies to observe World Down Syndrome Day, which is dedicated to spreading awareness about the condition and bringing the community closer together. And whereas the date, March 21, represents the uniqueness of the three copies of the chromosome 21 and celebrates individuals with Down Syndrome, this year marks the 17th anniversary of World Down Syndrome Day, supporting individuals with Down Syndrome and those who advocate for them. And whereas individuals with disabilities have the rights to be treated fairly and have the same opportunities as everyone else, working with others to improve their lives. And whereas the Chattahoochee Valley Down Syndrome Association will celebrate in conjunction with a global celebration by hosting a 3/21 mix, mingle, mix and mingle on 3/21, or March 21, 2024. To celebrate the Down Syndrome community and the Chattahoochee Valley community, may also show their support by wearing mismatched socks and usually, and usually the colors blue and yellow. And whereas parents and caregivers of the Chattahoochee Valley have been able to obtain the information and support they need to cope with the unique challenges of rearing a child with Down Syndrome. Now, therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 21, 2024, as World Down Syndrome Day.
Would you like to make some comments?
Good morning. I'm Carrie Duffenbaum. I'm the President of Chattahoochee Valley Down Syndrome Association. We just want to thank you guys for reading that and proclaiming March 21, World Down Syndrome Day. We're really excited about that. So we have several things coming up over the next few months, but we are really in the process of trying to revitalize Chattahoochee Valley Down Syndrome Association. So Christian is my Vice President. She's gonna come tell you guys about the mix and mingle that he just spoke about and...
Hi, I'm Christian Hill, the Vice President. On 3/21, we are holding a mix and mingle at the Rothschild Pound House Inn. And we would like to personally invite all of you to come out. Like Carrie said, we are in the process of revitalizing and rebranding. And we will be announcing a special... Will be announcement, correct? I don't want to give too much information. But we really are wanting to just bring the Down Syndrome community kind of back in. After COVID, everything died down and, you know, us moms are tired. We got a break during COVID. And so now we're just kind of going, gearing back up and getting to the community and just bring everyone back together. And we would love your support.
Where can the public go to get more information? Do you have a website?
We do. It is cvds.org. We also have a Facebook page, the Chattahoochee Valley Down Syndrome Association. We will be announcing our special announcement on Thursday, 3/21. So I would just check with our Facebook page because there may be a new website. But the CVDSA should just link you there.
Great. And they can get, that's where they can go to get information on the mix and mingle and the...
Yes.
Blue and yellow socks.
Yes. So that is a, that's a World Down Syndrome Day. This year, the theme is to end the stereotypes that a lot of individuals with Down Syndrome face. A lot of people think that if you have Down Syndrome, you can't do certain things. But just like as anyone else, we all have our strengths and we all have our weaknesses. So just because they have Down Syndrome and an extra chromosome does not hinder their abilities to achieve or not achieve things. Because I achieve stuff every day and I don't achieve stuff every day. And that is without the extra chromosome, so.
Great. Well, listen, thank you for being here. You want to introduce your other...
This is Tara Barnes. She is also a board member. And this is Sam Barnes. I'll let her. Yep, this is my little dude. He's very inquisitive. Seems like he's trying to figure out what's going on. Thank you, guys, for having us and reading that. I'm very excited. And I know that CVDSA is very excited to just grow and let people know that we're here. You know, like Christian said, we're, a lot of us are moms. You know, not to say that we exclude dads, you know. We're trying to figure out ways to get dads more involved and whatnot. But I know that Christian and I particularly, when we were trying to find support, it was a little challenging. And, you know, we're really excited to grow that and, you know, be available, you know, for when moms like us, you know, are, you know, trying to navigate it and figure out what to do and what comes next. Because a lot of the narrative around Down Syndrome is, like Christian said, that they can't do a lot of things, but they can do anything. You know, it might take them a little longer, but they can do anything. So again, thank you, guys.
Well, thank y'all for your hard work and thank you for being here. If you could, I've got copies of proclamations for you. Come up and let us thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Colin, I don't know how you're gonna follow that. But we do have a proclamation we're gonna offer up to Connor and some others from the Columbus Chamber of Commerce and Recognition Partners in Education Week. And Counselor Thomas is gonna offer that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to read this into the record. Whereas Partners in Education, or PI, is celebrating its 37th anniversary in Columbus. And whereas Partners in Education was founded with the goal of enhancing community engagement with the Muskogee County School District and schools throughout the greater Columbus region. And whereas the 2023-24 Partners in Education theme, Trail Blazers for Tomorrow, encourages partnerships to focus on the four pillars of citizenship, entrepreneurship, leadership, and career development. And whereas exposing our area students to these skills and concepts are crucial for the region's continued growth and success. And whereas these partnerships provide countless volunteer hours and significant financial support to the schools throughout the greater Columbus region. And whereas the City of Columbus recognizes the dedication of the hundreds of organizations participating in PI every year throughout our school districts. Now, therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does proclaim March 11 through the 15, 2024, as Partners in Education Week. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I think Mr. Mayor said it right, that there's no following up after what we just saw. So I would just like to say thank you very much for your continued partnership and support of the Partners in Education Initiative. We are very proud of having reignited it last year and this year pushing that envelope forward. This year, I am joined by one of my teammates, Tracy Herring, Small Business Manager for the Columbus Chamber of Commerce, along with two of our board members for the Partners in Education Committee, Peyton Linder from Troy University, and Brandy Tolbert of Literacy Alliance. So if you guys would like to come forward.
I just want to say thank you to the council for your support and all the endeavors. It's a pleasure to serve on the board and participate in PI. And that is all.
Again, just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm sure Muskogee County School District, on behalf of the administrators, teachers, and students, just thank you for recognizing this week.
And I would urge any organization who thinks they might be interested in participating with Partners in Education to check it out. Because it is incredible team building, builds culture within your community, and also helps out the schools. We were actually partners about 30, 35 years ago with Jensen Elementary. And man, we still, I still see some of those kids that are all grown up now. But anyway, thank y'all. Y'all come around, let us thank you again. All right. Next, Counselor Tucker is gonna read a proclamation in recognition of the 105th birthday of the American Legion. So if I could get all of our Legion folks to come up front. Counselor?
Yes, good morning. I'm gonna say as a proud American Legion Post 333 member, I'm smiling because we also are very active in PI. We was actually just talking about that this Saturday, about some of the things that we're planning on doing for PI Week. But I'm thankful to read this into record. And it reads, whereas Eddie L. Roberts, American Legion Post 333, will mark the 105th birthday of the American Legion. And whereas the American Legion has been a staunch advocate for veterans and their families since 1919. And whereas the American Legion was founded on the four pillars for 105 years and has led the charge as America's leading advocate for veterans' healthcare and rehabilitation, children and youth programs, a strong national security defense policy, and 100% Americanism. And whereas the American Legion has played a leading role in initiatives and breakthroughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community, from the U.S. Flag Code to the GI Bill. And whereas Eddie L. Roberts, American Legion Post 333, has fulfilled the American Legion's mission since its inception in 2014 through programs such as Blood Donor, Boys State, Boys Nation, High School Oratorical Competition, Voter Participation, ROTC, Education Assistance, Eagle Scout, Temporary Financial Assistance, Firefighter and Law Enforcement Person of the Year. And whereas the American Legion is celebrating its 105th birthday, now, therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Friday through Sunday, March 15 through the 17, 2024, as American Legion 105th Birthday Days.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Counselor. On behalf of the 729 members assigned to the Eddie L. Roberts, American Legion Post 333, we thank you for this proclamation as we prepare to celebrate the 105th birthday of the American Legion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Of course, I am Vicky Dykes. I am the commander. And she is the commander.
Yes, ma'am. I know, I know, Ms. Dykes. Anybody else want to make a comment or say anything? At least come introduce yourself.
I'd just like to say, my name is Reverend Charles Boffnight. I provide the spiritual leadership as the chaplain at the post. So I try to keep a little bit of order, if you would. But nevertheless, I really thank God, amen, for this opportunity to be a part of this American Legion whereby we serve the community, which we all should be doing. And I really appreciate it.
I'll probably be the last one to speak. But on behalf of our post, I wanted to make sure that it is known that we are partners in education with three local schools, Aaron Cone Middle School, South Columbus Elementary School, and Kendrick High School. And we have a lot of participation with those schools.
I'm Beatrice Thomas Slater, and I'm just proud to be a part of all of this. Thank you.
Good morning to the mayor, our council, and this community. I'm Mark Lawrence, just a servant leader in this community. I serve on many social action committees and I consider myself as part of social action for the American Legion Post 333. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. I am Michael Burks. I am the Chair for the Boys State in 333. And I serve proudly with my commander, Ms. Vicky Dykes.
Good morning. I'm Barbara Reston. I'm the historian for Post 333, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Well, thank all of you for what you do. And thank you, thank you very much for, 333 is scattered across the community. Y'all do so many things. You touch so many people around. We're just grateful for your service. Please come around, let us thank you. Man, I'm gonna give you this. If there's not enough, we call my office and we'll get a few more printed. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Good to see you, man. You doing well? All right, we've got one more proclamation for this morning. Be issued by Counselor Begley to Chloe Landre from New Horizons. This is in recognition of Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Month. You can bring all your folks up if you want to. We'd love to recognize all of them.
Thank you for the opportunity to read this into the record. Whereas President Ronald Reagan in 1987 established March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to increase public awareness of the needs and the potential of Americans with developmental disabilities and to provide the encouragement and opportunities they need to lead productive lives and to achieve their full potential. And whereas around 7 million people in the U.S. currently have an intellectual or developmental disability. And whereas community service boards are the largest providers of adult developmental disability services in the state of Georgia. disability services in the state of Georgia, and New Horizons Behavioral Health is a community service board providing developmental disability services for close to two hundred adults in our community. And whereas, the community has the responsibility to support the inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all facets of community life, as well as raise awareness of the barriers that people with disabilities still sometimes face when connecting to the communities in which they live. And whereas, we recommit our community to increasing awareness and inclusion of individuals living with a developmental disability, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people living with a developmental disability at all stages of their lives. Whereas Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month seeks to educate the community about the rights individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities have, and to not be seen as only a person with a disability, but as a contributing and valued member of their community. Now therefore, B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim March 2024 as Intellectual Developmental Disability Awareness Month.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. I'm Joanne Mosley. I'm the ADD Coordinator with New Horizons, and we're so happy to be here, and thank you for this honor. DED Awareness Month is in March, and we celebrate it every year. I also have the staff with us, with the DED program. Also, we have my supervisor, the Clinical Director, Karen Cotton Everett, here also. We are very honored to have this bestowed on us. We do, we do celebrate events in March. We have our talent show, our annual talent show coming up this Friday. Hopefully, we'll see your faces there. They're very talented. We love doing it every year. And we're gonna build it back up, just like previously I heard pandemic kinda slowed us down, but we're picking the pace back up. But I'd like the staff to introduce themselves this morning.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Notts. I'm a social service tech.
Good morning, Mayor Skip Henderson and council. It's been a pleasure to be invited to this gathering today to express our work, and it's just a pleasure to be here, to be involved with the staff here. And they welcomed me with open arms and everything, and I appreciate what they're providing for the community, and thank you so much.
Good morning, Mayor. Council. My name is Tracy Lewis. I'm a social service tech supervisor in New Horizons.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Green. I'm the Program Director of the Day Service and Support Employment.
Good morning. My name is Jermaine Suggs, and I'm the Case Manager for the Support Employment Program. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Chloe Landreth. I do marketing and outreach for New Horizons. Thank y'all for the acknowledgement, and like Joanne said, we'd love to see y'all at the talent show this Friday, six to eight, at nine nineteen Lawyers Lane. Thank y'all.
Well, we, we thank all of you, and even those that remain seated in the back this morning, for everything that New Horizons does. You guys are such a critical part of our community, and you're gap fillers, and you help us take care of the folks who need taken care of. So come around, let us present these to you, and you can let the council shake your hand. All right. We thank everybody that made time to get to this meeting this morning, so that we would have an opportunity to recognize you. Did you, I thought you raised your, yeah. We'll break order for just one quick moment. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Gotcha. Twenty-first is on Thursday, and we'll look at the, check the website out, make sure we've got that marked. Yes, if you want to leave that with the clerk, we'll get those changed, and Kim will call you and let you know when they're ready. All right, thank you. All right. Mr. City Attorney, your agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have got probably the shortest business agenda in the past six months, but we'll call up one ordinance. This is back on first reading to amend the text of the Unified Development Ordinance to add a new Article Ten to Chapter Four, relates to electric vehicle infrastructure. Recommended for approval, I know Chief Shores is here with some others. Are there any questions around the table?
No, sir. Doesn't appear to be.
Okay. Chief Shores, you wanna, do you wanna? Counselor Thomas asked if he would briefly make a comment about this one more time.
Good morning, Members, Council, Mayor. Yes, thank you. So a little bit of explanation is in order. So electric vehicle infrastructure is proliferating throughout our nation. It's an emerging technology, and the fire service nationwide is simply trying to ensure that it is done in a proper manner across the country. So with that, basically, there are three different types of chargers. There's Level One, Two, and Three. So Level One, for simplest explanation, is gonna be a type of charger that's really of what we would consider low voltage. In other words, an electrical outlet plug-in could feed that transformer that changes the alternating current over to DC. Really low voltage, and not something we're concerned about. However, there are some Level One chargers that enter the electrical circuitry of the home. So as part of the National Electric Code requirements, you also have to pull a permit to install those in the home, so that's why that verbiage is in there. Most homeowners are gonna probably opt for looking for a Level Two charger, simply because it charges at a higher rate. That's two hundred and forty volts, so it's kinda similar to a dryer plug-in. Again, you're entering the electrical circuitry of the home, and most existing homes are not designed to handle that type of voltage load increase, unless you have a four hundred amp service. So we, I don't want to get into the minutia of the Electric Code, but we're simply trying to make sure that people provide this infrastructure in their homes in a safe manner. So that's the reason the ordinance is in place. It's not there necessarily to, you know, increase burden on our community, requiring more permits. So already required to pull a permit anytime you enter the electrical infrastructure of the home. We're just simply ensuring that it's done properly and safely.
Counselor Kogle?
And just to clarify, there's no additional costs?
No, they're already, well, there's a cost for pulling a permit.
Right, but that was already in existence.
But it's nothing more. We're just simply trying to make sure that people do pull that permit, that they have a proper licensed electrical contractor that's basically gonna, I guess for lack of better terms, follow the rules, and make sure that we charge electric vehicles in a home in a safe manner, so that we don't wind up with an overcharged DC power supply, which could cause a very dynamic fire event in a home. Electric vehicle fires are rare, but if you've seen the ones on YouTube where they take place in homes, they are super dynamic. They are very difficult for us to deal with nationwide, and we're just trying to avoid problems in the future.
All right. Chief, thank you.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you. We'll vote on that in two weeks, Gee. And then, Mayor, that's the short agenda, but I will keep everybody after class for an executive session. Got litigation, potential litigation, and acquisition disposal of real estate. That's all we got.
All right. All right, we'll move into the public agenda, and remind everybody that you, you'll have five minutes, and I'll apologize in advance for holding you to that five minutes, just so that we can be fair to everybody. But if you can't complete what you want to present to council in five minutes, you can come back at the end of the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes. All right? And all you have to do is when you start off, just state your name and your state of residence. All right, first is Dr. Asante Hiltz, representing Valley Healthcare, regarding Sickle Cell Foundation Georgia Community Healthcare Work Program. Dr. Hiltz, it's good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, council members, city manager. Again, I am Asante Hiltz, and I represent Valley Healthcare System. And this morning, we wanted to ensure that the community members are aware of a new partnership that we have at Valley Healthcare, and we are partnering with the Sickle Cell Foundation of Georgia. We have partnered with them previously, but now we have a community health worker program that is stationed inside of our facility to make these services more accessible to our community members. And I'll have Ms. Tiffany Battle come up and share about the community health worker program.
Great.
Good morning, councilmen and women. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tiffany Battle. I'm a community health worker with the Sickle Cell Foundation of Georgia, and of course, we are in partnership with Valley Healthcare System. Just a little bit about the foundation. We service throughout Georgia. We have community health workers in every county in Georgia, but I'm here to, I'm here to speak to you today about Columbus. So a community health worker is a frontline public health worker who are entrusted members of our community, and have usually an understanding of communities that we serve. Community health workers understand and respond to the social and cultural norms of communities served, and all community health workers typically serve their communities. We assist by locating resources such as energy assistance, rental assistance, medical resources, transportation to and from appointments, food, housing, just to name a few. We actively form and nurture relationships in the community to maximize the efficacy of care coordination services. Again, I'm housed at Valley Healthcare. I'm a community health worker. We partnered, again, with them as far as a community health worker standpoint in December, and that site at Valley Healthcare is where we host our monthly sickle cell clinic. There is a national shortage of hematologists, other physicians trained, qualified to care for individuals with sickle cell disease. This has led to disparities in access to care for individuals living with sickle cell disease in Georgia, and more specifically, Columbus. Sickle Cell Foundation of Georgia contracts with hematologist Dr. Anthony Anyabula to mitigate this disparity. Dr. Anyabula and a nurse commutes to Valley Healthcare monthly to provide hematology care services to patients living in our community with sickle cell. This incredible partnership has enabled us to adequately and successfully assist patients while alleviating the load on our already overwhelmed EDs in urgent care facilities. This access to care has reduced hospitalizations and ED visits for the patients that I serve on my caseload. Again, we do have our sickle cell clinic every third Friday at ten AM to five, and you can schedule that by reaching out. I do have pamphlets for everyone. So our upcoming events that we have would be Camp New Hope. We have a partnership with Aflac, where they provided scholarships to pay for twenty-five children from Columbus with sickle cells, so they go for free for our camp. We also have our upcoming youth retreat, which is going to be in June. I just want to thank you guys for having me today. My name is Tiffany Battle, and I'm housed at Valley Healthcare. If you guys would like to get in contact with me, you can reach me at sicklecellga.org, or also visit Valley Health Columbus, and I also have information there.
Ms. Battle, thank you. And Dr. Hiltz, thank you, ma'am, for what y'all do with Valley Healthcare. It's a vital, vital part of our community in providing access to healthcare.
Thank you so much, and we want to make sure the community is aware of our resources, and Tiffany will pass out that information, and let me know if you have any questions.
We'll do it. Thank you, ladies. All right, next is Mr. Louis Thomas Jr., regarding the Columbus Parks and Recreation Department. Welcome, it's Thomas.
Good morning, how you doing? Good morning, everybody. First, I'd like to thank God for allowing me to be here before I speak to you regarding this issue. Once again, my name is Louis B. Thomas Jr. I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia. I grew up at fourteen seventy-nine Rochester Avenue, south side of Columbus. A graduate of Baker High School, a graduate of Chatham University, Valley Community College. I graduated also from Columbus State University. I served in the military several years. I worked a couple presidential terms for the U.S. Secret Service, assigned to the White House, PPD Division. And I would just like to address the issue that we have in regards to our youth, in regards to our youth of the community. Some years ago, the mayor, along with some city council members, we, you had a splotch meeting at the South Columbus United Methodist Church on Benning Drive there, asking for suggestions from the community about what to do with splotch funds. Many people made suggestions in terms of green space and things of that nature, and certain infrastructures that need to be built. And I stood up before you, and I spoke about the importance of investing in our youth. And I made the comment that it doesn't matter how much money you put into these external things, such as the shrubbery, green space buildings, these things that will attract certain individuals out of town in terms of tours, and that if you didn't think or consider the future of our youth, that there will always be a us against them mentality, and they will never respect or enjoy the things that have been built up in terms of like the football, A.J. McClone, the baseball thing that's gonna be playing, and all these other things. They're gonna continue to do vandalism and destroy these things, because they don't feel like they are a part of it. And I can say that because I see, I speak to these kids every day. I've worked with certain individuals, we volunteer at times to work with these kids, and we use basketball as a tool to pull them out of that community. And I think that if it had not been for the community centers and recreation centers, such as, at one time, there was a rec center right there, we used to be at Concedero Elementary, right there at Promise King up in Washington Heights, that we had as a safe space to go to, to stay away from the streets, because for me and many others, we could have very easily have gone a different route in terms of our lives if we didn't have those places to go to, and have the individuals that volunteer at time and work at these places to guide us and give us some type of structure away from the streets. And I've been gone for many years, and I've come back to Columbus, and I saw where a lot of those things have been closed down, or just done away with for one reason or another. And I think all of us up in here can agree that the crime rate has gone up, and shooters and murders, just about every day seem like, and they're getting younger and younger. And I can say that because I see them every day, because I presently work, I've been working in law enforcement for the past fifteen, sixteen years, and I have direct contact with these individuals. And the mindset that I see these kids have, it's only gonna get worse for it, if we don't start giving them a safe space to go to. All these kids are not bad. They just don't have anything to do. They need somewhere to go where they can feel safe, somewhere they can get structured. They want guidance, discipline, and learning, all these things. And the problem that I've seen that we come to, if someone came up with the idea of closing these community centers down and opening up super centers, and the problem is, these kids don't have any way to get to these super centers. There's E. Can Homes, Farley Homes, in the, like, the Pop Off and Boxwood area, they don't have a way to get there. They don't have any transportation, because it's too far to walk. And you can't expect a kid to walk five to eight miles to get to a rec center. So, and I think that we have a lot of resources here in Columbus, and I think if you look at the purpose of a Parks and Recreation Department, according to the National Parks and Rec Association, is to promote wellness and health for people, all people of different disabilities, social class, and we think we need to allow these kids to use the resources that we have, that taxpayers pay for. And I think that's something that we have to invest in.
It's Thomas. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much. It's Thomas. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much for being here this morning. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, next is Mr. Scott Cole regarding the Jonathan Hatcher Skateboard Park. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. My name is Scott Cole. I live in Columbus, Georgia. I am I'm a part of the Cuckoo's Nest. Okay, you hear me? Okay. I'm part of the Cuckoo's Nest Skate Shop here in Columbus. I'm representing skateboarders of Columbus here. And the importance of the skate park, in which we are all aware, as of the last city council meeting, will be in transition of being torn down in the future due to the renovations to be done on the baseball field. With that being said, our main hope is a smooth transition with that. And we appreciate you guys giving us time, you know, and being in communication with us. Plenty of the council members have done that and have reached out to us for that, and we appreciate that. But we are just wanting to have a smooth transition of that, because as my man over here has just stated, the youth, it's very important for these kids to have a place. The key thing about skateboarding is that not, it's all ages. We have two-year-olds to 60-year-olds at the park, okay? So we cross the board. We have all races. We have all genders. My daughter skateboards, you know what I mean? She's grown up around this. With that being said, it's very important, because a key thing about skateboarding is that the time period in a youth's life, it's kind of crucial that they have an outlet at that time, you know? And to have positive people in their lives, because at the park, we have families. I mean, we have mothers and fathers that bring their kids, and they all skate together. Like, this is, it's amazing to see this, you know? We have the military. I mean, we have lots of people from Fort Moore that attend at the park, you know what I mean? So to have that outlet and those kids to have those influences in their life, even if it is for one day a week, you know, up to seven days a week. Skateboarding is year-round. We don't take a break. We ain't got a season. There's not a season for it. It is year-round. These kids do it, you know what I mean? We would just like that that transition between the old park being demolished and the new park being built to kind of overlap to where these kids see, you know what I mean, that, yes, it's there. They'll be anticipating it, looking forward to it, you know? It's just a very important thing, seriously, because these guys are it's just crucial for these young men and women at that point in time in their life, you know? And that alone, whenever, I grew up here. And growing up here, I started skateboarding when I was 11 years old. I've been in skateboarding for 37 years. I have built skate parks across this country. I own, I am, like I said, a part-owner in the local skate shop. I've been open for 15 years, you know? I mean, it's not a matter of, I care about skateboarding, okay? And I care about these kids, because I was one of these kids, you know? And that's very important to me, that they have something. As I was stressing, growing up here, in 1996 and '97, me and other fellow skateboarders approached the city. We got petitions. We did all, you know, went through, got signatures, did all these things. We approached Parks and Recreation several meetings over the period of time between 1996 and 1997. By the end of those meetings, it was great that we were informed that we would be, yes, you're put on the calendar. You're put on the calendar for 2009. This was 1996, 1997. As happy as we were to hear it, I just don't want that to happen to these kids. I don't want it to be pushed and put on the back burner as if it's not important, because we already have it. And I know that was my line.
Yeah, it was. Mr. Cole, I will tell you that council's been pretty clear about the fact that they want this to be a smooth transition. That they don't want to remove an asset in our community without having already planned for a bridge to get us to the construction of the next one. So, and I appreciate you and the other skaters that have come forward and raised the concern. It was always planned to try to bridge that, but I think it helps put a face with the issue. And so we appreciate, I appreciate you guys coming forward. Counselor Kogle.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher, for coming. I can attest to the importance of skating. My husband's actually a skateboarder. And during COVID, I decided that I was going to teach myself how to longboard, so that's something to do with my daughter. So I guess we're a family of skaters now, so some better than others. But I do think it is more so than having a plan to bridge the gap. I think that this council needs to, and we need to reiterate again, the importance of having the park. If the park does indeed move, that that park is rebuilt before it is moved, or before it is destroyed, so that it's not a plan to have it rebuilt. It is rebuilt, and I would hope that it is still within that footprint, because I do think it is very important for that portion, this portion of Columbus to have that resource and the consolidation of that type of activity in South Commons. So I do think, again, just to reinforce, that we need to make sure that in any RFP, that it is mandated that that park is rebuilt before it is destroyed. And so I just want to make sure that that is on the record and that going forward, that that is our intention.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and City Managers, have been determined when the skateboard park will be demolished?
No.
And what would an expectation be of a timeline or schedule?
Mayor, and to you, Counselor Davis, we have not formulated a schedule yet. What I can tell you is that we know that as we move forward with AA Baseball, it's Golden Park Baseball Stadium is scheduled to be ready for play April of 2025. The other components of the economic development activity will come sometime thereafter. But I can say that if it's necessary that the skateboard park be moved as we move forward with the AA Baseball renovation, which I don't anticipate, then the plan is that we will relocate that skateboard park somewhere on the site. And that's a 100-acre site or so down there, when you consider the A.J. McClung and the baseball stadium, excuse me, the softball, fast-paced softball, and all of the other components. But we hear you loud and clear, and as the mayor said, it has always, it has never been the thought that we would not have the skateboard park. It's been the thought that we were relocating the skateboard park, and it would be bigger. It would be better. It would be more than. I mean, they're down there right now skateboarding on a outdated facility in 2003. We want to bring you a facility that's going to be 20, 25, and beyond. And so it's going to be state-of-the-art. It's going to be bigger, better, and I think you're going to be very pleased with it.
Thank you, guys.
Well, Ms. City Manager, the gentleman makes a great observation. Certainly, I agree with my fellow colleague. We know all this. It's been communicated. But how long do you expect for the skateboard park? How long would you expect it to be in transition to be reconstructed?
I can't answer that.
As well as determining a new site?
I can't answer that question today.
Okay. Well, I think what's important is that if this is what we're communicating and this is what people are understanding, it's going to take some time. And you got to determine the site first, and it's going to take some time. And you're going to have to do some, probably some consulting, reconfiguration, probably get some professionals in here to re, if you want to make it bigger and better, you're going to have to probably get some people that understand this. All that's going to take time. So the gentleman's point, what he's saying, is a transition, and that's where I'm going.
I hear him. I understand that. And I was a part of building that skateboard park that's there, and we brought in the best.
Understand. Understand. My point is that we need to get ahead of it. Let's plan. Let's start working on it, because these things move fast. And even this conversation today, it said that we don't know yet.
Well, this will all be done from a master plan for the private side of it. So that's why it's not being able to be designated right now, because the first piece is going to be the baseball piece. So as we get a master plan, we're going to make sure that there'll be input on what's going out there. We've got an advisory group that will work with whatever master planner we hire through an RFP process. But I think, as the city manager was saying, all of us are very clear. And I think we all agree that we want to try to make sure that there is an overlap. We want to have, we want to make sure that there's no downtime, if possible. But if there is, it's minimal, and it's part of, it's while the other piece is under construction.
And I would just say again, Mayor, council voted at the last meeting, so two weeks ago. And we've had baseball there for, you know, and the skateboard park being where it's located was not an issue. I don't anticipate it being an issue as we move towards renovation of Golden Park Facility for April 2025. But if we determine that early, and we're just getting into it, that it's going to be an issue, then we will be making plans to relocate it. I don't anticipate that being the case.
Now, and let me say this, plans, master plans, those are all subject to change, all right? All I'm saying is, there's a transition here involved, okay? When you start making decisions and moving things around that park, it's gone. If you don't have that plan ready to place, what he's talking about, the transition, is you're going to have some time, six months, a year, that the children and the people who enjoy the park won't be able to skate.
Mayor, that's not going to happen.
Okay, that's all we're talking about.
That's not going to happen.
We're talking about a lot of worst-case scenarios here.
I don't want to get you all hyped up that we're getting ready to take a facility away from you.
We're, we are, and we're going to work with the community as well.
And nobody's trying to get anybody hyped up. What I'm saying is, you might want to reach out to some of those people in the next few months and start working on it to get ahead of it, to incorporate it, so you can make a streamlined transition.
I've already reached out to New Line Skate Parks. I've already talked to them.
And Mr. Cole, I apologize, but your time has expired. But if you want to come back at the end of the meeting, you're welcome to.
But Mayor, I hear the counselor and the counselors, and we will move forward in accordance with what we hear from them.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Teresa Elamene, representing Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding the Macon-Dixon Divide.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good to wake up this morning and be here. When I thought about moving to Columbus in 2010, the former mayor of Jackson, Mississippi, Choquey Lumumba, who joined the ancestors in 2012, he introduced me to someone here, and that person told me the story of the Macon-Dixon line. And he identified Macon Road as that line. Well, because it's a color line, I determined I would move south of the Macon-Dixon line. So I moved to Steammill Road, Mr. City Manager. When I saw those beautiful homes, I said, how bad could it be? And I moved to Cross Creek Apartments. I lived there for 12 years. And the investors from Nevada came in and took it over, double the rent, double the rent. See, the word is out that Columbus is a real estate town. It's all about the land. And freedom is all about land. So when you do all this TAD and development and everything, I see what it's about. So when I started looking for a place to live, I started looking on Schaumburg Road. Hey, it was nice. No difference in the rent on Schaumburg Road and Cross Creek Apartments. I asked, who would my representatives be? I was going to go from Barnes, Buckner, Harbison, and Hughley to Allen, Cantrell, Robertson, you get the point. The Macon-Dixon line is a color line, but it's just a matter of time before it will be erased. I'm from Atlanta, and I watched the investors move in there 40 years ago. So it's going to be erased, 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, in the mayor's office. 2026 is just right around the corner. We got to get out the vote, because that's what it's all about. Who represents you up there in this real estate town where land is a priority? It's a color line. We need to erase the Macon-Dixon line. It's just a matter of time, because I was going to live on Schaumburg Road. There's a lot of other people up there, black, on Schaumburg Road. I know what the Macon-Dixon line is about, and it will be erased because the investors are in here. And they don't care. They just care about green, and I do mean money and land. So on a celebratory note, the International Women's Day was a great time. Thank you, Councilwoman Toya Tucker, for being here. And my dear friend, Lindsay, is going to help me pass out the programs. I'm sorry you couldn't make it, Ms. Kogle and Ms. Crabbe, but we did save a program for you and Ms. Thomas. And there's one for Sandra Davis, as well as for Lindsay and Mr. Mayor. If you could give Mr. Mayor one, Lindsay, Councilwoman one set in that seat. And we know it can happen again. Do you hear me, women? Do you hear me? 2026. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to be here. Headed to Atlanta Housing Justice Day tomorrow. We fighting for renters' rights and to deal with these slum lords. I'll see you when I get back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elamene. Safe travels.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. City Manager.
Mayor, I've got just four items and then purchases, but I do have an add-on for a fifth item on a street acceptance that engineering has brought to me this morning. Item one is a permanent encroachment to install a marquee.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve items one, two, three, and four. Alright, we have a motion, a second to approve items one, two, three, and four. Is there any that anyone would like pulled? Alright, uh, let's go through them real quick, and then we'll call the votes.
So, item number one, and I know we are all familiar with twelve thirty-one Broadway, the old Rialto Theater, if you've been around Columbus. But, uh, Mr. John Teeples, uh, made the request, engineering had no problem. It's been approved, uh, by Uptown Facade Boulevard. It's actual replacement for an older sand, and there's no cost to the city, but the sand will extend approximately seven foot, four inches from the face of the building into the public right-of-way. And number two is a permanent encroachment of four balconies, uh, two at the same location. Two on the second floor and two on the third floor. The third item, um, is FEMA assistance to firefighters' grant, and it's, uh, four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. It's for the purchase of various pieces of health, safety equipment for fire EMS. And, um, related to, uh, cancer, the cancer initiative. Item number four, uh, is a grant application for Matra, it's the usual application, it's fifty-three oh seven and then the fifty-three oh nine. One, the grant is for one, uh, point nine million dollars, and the other grant is two hundred sixty-one thousand dollars.
Okay, and there is a motion, second on one, two, three, and four. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed?
The add-on, Mayor, is a street acceptance that has been handed out to you for a portion of Galloway Lane and Holstein Hill in Phase Two of Heffahorn Farm. The street has been improved and meet the requirement specification, as we, we require an engineer and recommend that we accept the street.
Motion, second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, that street's accepted.
I've got a long list of purchases, maybe the longest list that I've seen in recent time. The first one is for Muskogee County Prison, it's, uh, two twenty-twenty-four four-ounce transit fifteen-passenger Vans. And we're asking your approval.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to approve A. Any discussion on that? Chris, if you'd cue it, and let, uh, let the counselors vote on item A. Thank you, if you enter your votes, please. Alright, that is, uh, that's approved.
Next, I've got for fire EMS.
Alright, and there is a motion, uh, from Counselor Davis to approve item B through F. Alright, there is a second. Does anybody want any of those pulled? Alright, uh, all the, all those in favor of items B through F, say aye. Any opposed? The City Manager, if you'd.
Uh, B is for fire EMS, it's, um, twenty-twenty-three four-one-fifty super crew, four-by-two. And C is, um, for Public Works, it's a twenty-twenty-four four-one-fifty. D is for Public Works, it's one forklift, uh, for, um, for that department. E, uh, is Public Works, it's two regular cab service trucks, um, that they need. And, uh, F, uh, is for Public Works, electric motor repair, um, that is necessary. And Mayor, that's B through F.
Okay, thank you. Next on is, uh, Counsel Crayle.
On, on item I, um, I just wanted to bring something up, you know, it's a contract for the extension for temporary staffing for the Civic Center. And I, I have a question. What's the process, where are we in the process of hiring a permanent director of the Civic Center?
That search is, uh, ongoing, the position is advertised until field. And, um, and so it's an ongoing process.
Okay, I think the Counselor Davis made a motion for G through R. Do I hear a second?
What if the cost of G?
Uh, there's, it, that's an RFP, and so there's no, the cost is not, has not been determined yet. We're doing an RFP. It's professional service to develop the twenty-fifty metropolitan plan and the twenty-twenty-three congestion management.
G?
Yeah, we can tell you the amount of the budget, but do we wanna advertise that in RFP?
Do I hear a second for items G through? Okay, I hear a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, and they pass.
Was that G through?
R.
You want me to go through them? So that was, uh, the, uh, professional services, G. H is workers' comp excess coverage and loss control services. That was H, I'm sorry. I, uh, is contract extension for temporary staffing, uh, for Civic Center. J, repair of Caterpillar Dozier for Public Works. K is night vision goggles and accessories for the Columbus Police Department. L would be drones and accessories for the Columbus Police Department. M, um, personal radiation detectors, uh, and accessories for Columbus Fire EMS. N, you did go through all of those, right? Did we?
Through R, yeah, all through, yes.
Uh, household recycling carts for Public Works, uh, recycling carts. And then Public Works, uh, carts for, uh, household waste. It's O, uh, P, industrial washer extractor and industrial dryer for the Muskogee County Jail. Q, uh, dispatch system for the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office. Uh, and P, uh, excuse me, R, did you?
He said it was through R.
Did it, P, okay. I'm sorry, motorcycles for the police department, uh, it's two motorcycles for the police department. Those are the purchases, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, Counselor Kogle?
Is G, um, replacing an existing, or, I guess, is there, is it replacing an existing plan, or is it, I guess, is it just kinda rolling over into the next plan?
Yeah, it's, um. Will, you wanna come around and? Well, it's, of course, you know, you normally do a plan for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five, and then you go twenty twenty-five.
So are we twenty twenty, what are we on right now?
Where's?
Are we on like twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five? Twenty twenty to twenty thirty-eight? Yeah, but I just wanna know what numbers we're on.
Talk about the, the plan, we, we are going for, now through twenty fifty. When does the current one? When did it start and when does it?
The current plan, I believe, was done ten years ago, and that was the twenty forty-five Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So, very much like the comprehensive plan, it is completely updated every ten years. This will be the twenty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It will include a full freight study, uh, congestion management, and then new projects, because in the twenty forty-five plan, a lot of our projects were moved to T-Splosts out of that plan. So, this will be a comprehensive transportation plan for the next ten years.
So are we on the, so this is the twenty, just to clarify, so this is for twenty fifty, but we're on twenty forty right now?
Twenty forty-five, I don't know, we're following federal guidelines.
Okay.
I know the ma, you're trying to do the math in your head.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious if we're like ten years ahead, or if we're planning ten years ahead, or if we're on like twenty twenty to twenty thirty, or?
We have, we have a, a sub-document that we look at in three-year intervals called the Transportation Improvement Program. And that is our short-term, what we work through.
Right.
Within this master plan.
Okay, is, can, can, is that something that you can send to council?
What's that?
What we're on existing right now?
Yeah, we can send you the, yeah, the twenty forty-five, we can send it to you. It's also online and on our website.
Okay, perfect, if you can send me that link, that'd be great, thank you.
Alright, Counselor Davis? Hang on, coming, there we go.
And Mr. City Manager, before you go, these plans, when we do these plans, they're somewhat required to seek grants and funding and things like that. I mean, that's what we have to do to
That's right.
To have in-house in order to prepare for all that stuff, and they're gonna require it, right?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And we've been very lucky with two T-Splosts, where we do not have to go get federal money and the sales taxes paying for these major projects that we've been able to pull forward since twenty twelve.
Yeah. So Mayor, I do have some updates. Thank you. We've got, um, Reggie Lewis here, co-founder of Cure Violence, he's gonna provide you a Cure Violence update.
Good morning, City Council, Mayor, thank you for having us today. Uh, we wanna kinda give an update on our Cure Violence program and what we've been doing. As you know, when we first started this, this was to implement the program in the city. It's been eighteen months. Throughout that time, we knew we were gonna be facing some challenges and things as we worked through those challenges and refined our program as we moved forward. One of the things that we've identified as we started working is there are definitely some social and structural factors in, in, in development and other things that impact our communities that we're working with. As you know, we were focusing on the three-one-nine-zero-three area. And in that area, what we identified is, we have about thirty-five percent of our people in that area are in poverty. There is low to medium average income of about twenty-four thousand dollars, which is about eleven dollars an hour. As well as affordable housing is a big issue in that community. As we move forward, uh, one of the things we wanna start focusing on are, how do we move some of those barriers dealing with poverty and other things? As you know, y'all are working on the Golden Park and, uh, South Cummings remodel. One of the things we would ask, look at is possibly looking at, how do we use that opportunity to employ people from that area to kinda help reduce that poverty and some of that, uh, some of the affordable housing pieces? I know that's a valuable piece, uh, we've seen it happen in other cities where they've been intentional about employment in the areas that have the most poverty. That will be a very positive, uh, opportunity for the folks in that community. And as well as address two things, well, three things actually, address affordable housing, because they're making more money. It will also provide them with jobs that will help them with their income, possibly being in the fifteen dollars and more area. And then we have people like Goodwill and Columbus Tech who have programs that can help with construction-ready and items like that, that could help get those people prepared as we move forward with new products and new development in our city. So that was one of the things I wanted to kinda bring up from that perspective. But as we moved forward in January, we had our Cure Violence Global team come down and give us training that helped us reset a little bit of what we were doing and how we were doing it. The main thing is really looking at the Cure Violence model elements and ensuring that we are going about it the right way. And the first one was really to help people understand that the motto is about detecting and interrupting violence in the community, using credible messengers to reduce gun violence. The second one then is changing the behavior and norms of those who are at high risk. And when we talk about high risk, when we initially started, we were looking at that fifteen to twenty-five-year-old black male. Now our range has gone from fourteen to thirty-five. This is based on other Cure Violence sites and what they've seen. We look at the person and see if they've been incarcerated. We've also looked and see if they're in any kind of heavy activity that will, basically, basically put them in a situation where, um, they're susceptible to high risk, uh, with gun violence. But we also look at, you know, have they have violent behavior and other things that could associate them with high risk. If they're a high risk, we then look at the opportunity to work with our outreach workers. And our outreach workers will help them with a reduction plan on how to get them out of the high risk, either with finding them GUDs, helping with education, helping them find jobs, other things. So, one of the things that we're doing is building that foundation. And the foundation really deals with, uh, having the right workers. We have five, uh, staff members hired, we still have more, we need to hire, uh, the right community. We're focusing on the Winston Road and Oakland Park areas. Oakland Park is a very dense populated area, uh, it has a lot of activity going on in that area. The citizens have been concerned about trash and other things going on, so we're really working hard in there. The teams have been boots on the ground in that area, passing out our flyers and getting them, getting the community to know who we are in that area. We are working with, looking at the right participants, what I just recently talked about. But it's also the right partners, as you heard me say, Goodwill, uh, Columbus Tech, CSU's helping us with grants. We're also looking at YMCA Girls, Inc., Boys and Girls Club, where we're teaming up with a Team Summit. Of course, parks and rents have been a very big part of, of what we've been doing. They've opened up Frank Chester many times, especially over the summer when we did summer programming. And we also had a, a job fair at the end of August that had almost five hundred people show up at that job fair with almost two thousand jobs available. And we had about a hundred people who received jobs from that point. But then the community mobilization piece, uh, we're looking at having monthly events that we will sponsor. Our first one will be March sixteenth, this weekend, hopefully if it doesn't rain. But the idea behind these community events is to really get the community, um, involved in understanding, not just having a fun day, but bringing resources to them, like Georgia Power Utility Systems, uh, what Goodwill does from their career planning and others like that, because that is how we build the trust in that community by bringing those resources to them. We saw that example when we did that summer programming at Frank Chester, that we had a lot of attendance to that program, so we wanna continue that next year. But the public education piece is the messaging. We will start a public education campaign starting up recently, and I'll show you some of those as we move forward. And then the documentation, the consistency and follow-up really is around what, I know, uh, Councilman Glenn likes to hear is the metrics. One of the things we wanna make sure we do is, we have a database site under Cure Violence Global that includes all of the Cure Violence sites, but it's a measurement of how we are doing and what we're looking at. So we'll start, we have some training we'll do at the end of the month, and we'll use that, uh, to give out reporting as we move forward. When I talked about community mobilization, uh, those are a couple of things I was talking about as far as the events that we were doing. We also will start a shooting response within seventy-two hours after we have an incident in our containment area, which is the Oakland Park and Winston area. The idea behind that is to have a group, have your community and the groups that are supporting no violence in those communities, that show up in those areas. The idea is to kinda get the community to change that mindset on what's happening in their community and not to accept violence as you can't do anything about it, it's not acceptable. So the idea behind those responses is starting to get that activity moving where we get the community to change how they feel about gun violence and starting to get to positive reinforcement and create that cohesion in that community. That also will allow us to have the churches, community leaders also show up in the responses to also show their support for no gun violence in those areas. So those are things that you'll start seeing out of the team and seeing out of us and, and community leaders as we start moving forward. These are so many events that we've done over the time, the last eighteen months, you know, we had, we owned Fridays, was something that was started by myself and Rodney Close at Boys and Girls Club with support of Rotary Club of Columbus that gave us funding and put these on. One of the events that we had was actually being held when we had the kids that were shot upon Warner Springs Road. So, we know that these are important, we had about seventy-five kids average at these events. We had basketball tournaments, we played, uh, three-point shootout. We also had a cafe, we fed them, we had a dance club, we had a gaming facility at each one of these. We put on three of those events, most of them were held on South Columbus, uh, Boys and Girls Club, but we did hold one at the North Columbus Boys Club and Girls Club as well. As you heard, we talked about the community events that we'll start having every month. And then we did the C-three Summer Collaborative Effort that was done last summer, and we all presented that at the council meeting last year. We wanna try to do that again this year, and, and those were organizations like Urban League, YMCA, Girls and Boys Club, Girls, Inc., uh, Better Works, Goodwill, and some few other organizations that we had. The Team Summit is coming up, we are planning that out, uh, this will be our third year doing that. Last year, we had two hundred and fifty kids at the Team Summit, and- Last year, we had two hundred and fifty kids at the Team Summit, and one of our main topics was violence, and we had a breakout session with those teams. And we have a lot, got a lot of information back from them. Uh, we have two young ladies from Columbus High School that want to kind of help facilitate the Team Summit next year or this year. Uh, we were working with them to try to really get that established. Uh, but one of the things that we realized is when we did our breakout session, the first thing we did was we kind of took a step back and said, we're not here to present to you, we want to sit down and listen to what you have to say. And those young men and women had a lot to say to us, and I think it's very valuable that we take that opportunity to kind of put them in the forefront so that they can hear and believe that the adults are listening to them and we're just not making decisions for them without involving them in those choices. It's very key that we utilize their efforts to really understand what we can do for them, because a lot of things that they talked about is having stuff to do, having things to do where they live. So it's not simply going up to start in strikes on the north end. It's very difficult for young men and women from the south end to get up there. So if we only have everything on the north end, we're missing opportunity to help those who in our community that are suffering the most and having the most issues occur in our community, so we have to look at those things. So the rec centers are one of the important things. We also had the gaming events that we did at the Civic Center, uh, that was in conjunction with YMCA, the Civic Center, as well as Rotary Club and Cure Violence. Uh, we had the, uh, soccer team, the River Rapids came out, they played with the kids, we gave away gifts and prizes and food. Uh, Muskogee County Sheriff Department also brought out their, uh, gaming truck. And then at Carver, they were doing a diversion program, Walk Down Words, where we really, we have all the ninth graders, there's about, we did this last year and we're doing it this year. There's possibly a hundred and ninety-three students in that, in the ninth grade at Carver High School. And it's really for our team to kind of share their experiences as well as what they've been through, so that these students understand some of the pitfalls and things that they can go through. So that's been very successful. We are working on trying to put some more curriculum in that area, and we're working with trying to get experience from next year. Um, our next steps, uh, of course, is our contract or our MOUs ending at the end of this month. We would like to have our extension so we can move out to the end of the year, December twenty twenty-four. This is not an ask for any kind of additional funding, this is simply continuing on what we had. Uh, and to finish that out and really continue to build this program out as we need it, we'll be hiring the supervisors, some additional staff that we need to put in place, as well as continue, uh, training with CB, uh, Global with, uh, booster training. Booster training is simply the training that our staff went through, but it's always a refresher that we have to go through to make sure that we're staying on course and following the guidelines to them. Uh, we will do a new data pool to kind of get an example of where we are and what we are facing and what has changed. We have seen some changes that have migrated with some of the violence occurring more on the east end, but we still think our focus needs to be on, uh, three one nine oh three area because of the barriers that I talked about with poverty, affordable housing, and average income. And then we've been having some training with pastoral institutions and other ones that we've partnered with to kind of help with mental and behavioral components of our program, including like Valley Health Services and those things like that, to ensure that we are staying on top of issues that we're seeing in the community. And then, of course, the monthly event, and we are working on trying to do our five oh one C, uh, to give us more opportunities for additional grants and information like that. That didn't show up yet. But what I was showing here was just basically, uh, as we know, Part One crimes for these years probably down about three hundred. And as y'all know, Part One crimes are homicides, aggravated assaults, robberies, rapes and things like that. Um, I know we're up to four homicides. Unfortunately, we had two homicides in our containment area on Winston, I mean, Wyatt Street in Patsy. Uh, that was, uh, uh, two gentlemen that were in, in a gunfight, and we also had the shooting on Port Bennett Road. So we, we know that that is the area that we need to be in. We are decreasing our trend, however, we know that we have to stay focused and diligent. And it's not only us that have to be part of this initiative, we have to work at every part, fighting the poverty and fighting the other issues that come across. Um, as I told you, we have a campaign that we'll start with our pub ed, and these are some of the posters and, uh, billboards that will start showing up. These were information or ideas that were given by our team as well as by some of the students that we've been working with. We have the students drawing posters as well that'll come out as well. But these are just some of the things that we want to put out, uh, the messaging to really start getting that message across that we need to end gun violence in Columbus and end gun violence across Muskogee County. These are just some of our community events that we've done. Uh, the top one was a Better Works event for Second Chance. Uh, that's a big initiative with Kristen Bark and, and Better Works and Georgia For Opportunity. The Game of Life one was at Georgetown Elementary where they basically played the game of life where they put students, they gave students basically what you made, what your career was, and then the students had to go around to the different organizations and act like they were having, you know, going through a work week, sort of like Play spent. Uh, the one thing I want to mention about that as well as Goodwill has just come up with a live Play spent, uh, type simulation. Uh, one of the things we want to start doing is we want to start getting organizations and people involved and taking on, going through that, uh, simulation, because I think it gives you an idea of what people deal with when they happen to deal with services and trying to get it, but also what do the service, uh, industry deal with when they're dealing with the community. Uh, we had community outreach with Muskogee County Sheriff Office coming down to, uh, the Civic Center. The one at the bottom of Welcome was, uh, Startup Columbus. We did education on business startup entrepreneurship at the Boys and Girls Club. Seven oh six Day is a sponsorship by DJ Cash Flow. We helped sponsor that one. And as you can see, with the Team Summit was the Rise and Shine, Building Your Personal Brand was one of the things that we had as a breakout session at the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, in the middle at the bottom is the family, uh, that's Naveyana and Gabrielle. Those are two young ladies that I was talking about earlier. As you can see on the left was the gaming, uh, systems that we put in or you all purchased for, uh, Frank Chester, and that was what we did over the summer with the kids. Our team members Tabitha and Kenyatta went to a Veterans Day, uh, event that they were putting on. Uh, up in the top left, we were in Omaha, as you know, most of, most people know that we've been in touch with Omaha, Nebraska, and what they've been doing in their communities over the last sixteen years. They've been able to reduce violence by almost fifty percent. They've also built a very good relationship with the police department. Um, gun violence, as far as police-involved shootings, have gone down from eleven down to three, uh, with only one fatality, and they built a very strong relationship in that community. So we were working with them to try to get a better understanding of what they've done. And we're also reaching out to Durham, North Carolina, that has a, a, uh, Cure Violence piece that's also, uh, underneath the Health Department and kind of make sure we go through that piece. And then the, the bottom right corner is that Team Summit, uh, again. And these are just other pictures of some of the events that we have. So I'm gonna stop right there. I think that's enough with the pictures and everything else, but any questions or anything I can answer?
Yeah, Councilor Tucker?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, I, I see, um, you all around all the time. Um, thank you to Dr. Santay Hips, Hips, and I also want to thank Jerome Lawson, um, in the back, I see he had came in. Um, one of the questions that I had, and you mentioned District Four in the east side. So last year, um, I'm gonna say around the September twenty-fifth, I had got a report murders by district, and District Four had two murders. And actually, that was like the last of the, we, we had no more murders
Right.
that year. Um, and I, I mean, I was thankful, but however, you see what happened at, at the beginning of the year.
Right.
We had a murder off ASA. Um, we just recently had a murder near Beveterde Park and some of the concerns of those, um, residences lighting, you know, in the area, um, for that individual that had passed away, that nineteen-year-old. But when I saw, I had a question in reference to the seventy-two hours. When they, when it's murders in areas like that, how, how does that work far as going out? Because as you know, both ASA and Beveterde, that, that area, that Parkwood area, is heavy, uh, senior citizens.
Right.
It's not typical, um, young people in that community, even with the one with the ASA.
Right.
Um, he was going to his grandparents' house.
Right.
So how, how are we connecting with those community members in reference to Cure Violence?
Right. So I, I want to clarify something real quick. So we are containment area is three one nine oh three, but how we've been connecting with other community members by attending different events that those communities are having. So town halls, uh, any events that we know they're having for the community to talk about violence and anything else, we try to attend that. Uh, we do plan to get back on like our tour we were doing before we ran into COVID. Uh, we think that is valuable because what we're gonna need is we're gonna need help, not just simply our little team, but the community has to be involved in how, uh, this past weekend, we were at Greater Bevwood Baptist Church speaking at that event. So that's how we're starting to get out to the community a little bit more is by going to these different events, explaining to them more about what Cure Violence is and how they can be involved in that. And what we'll start doing now is we're gonna start releasing some of the information is how different sectors in the community can be involved and helping us, because you're right, uh, that's where I hung out most of the time was in Beveterde Park area. Uh, most of those folks are older now. Uh, so we're going, those, it's almost like an anomaly when that occurred, because when I heard it, you know, the first thing I remember was the event way back when we were growing up, where the young man was jumped by the game members raiders. So it's, it's really getting the community to understand what we're doing, but also give them, uh, some activities and things that they can be part of, because we want them to be part of our responses as well to show up. We will lead the response. We're not asking them to do it, but we will lead the response. But yes, we want to get that information out, so we're working on our website to give better information, but we want to have more events where we're starting to share that information.
Okay, so for, um, I'm just saying clarification, when they, there are incidents, really you're looking at the three one nine oh three area as far as the incidents.
Right now, that's what we're staffed for. Um, what we want to do is expand that out, because we have places like Wilson Apartments. Uh, that's a very, we've been getting a lot of complaints in there. Uh, we just don't have enough staff to reach out all over the community, but we want to try to find ways we can advocate for, you know, volunteers or advocates that can work in areas and train them on our process where we can help in that situation.
Well, I, I will say, um, District Four has a lot of neighborhood watch groups, and they are very vigilant. Um, actually, we're about to host, um, a meeting in that Parkwood area because of that, that crime that occurred, and, you know, the, the residents are extremely concerned. So on March, um, eighteen
Okay.
at five o'clock, we're gonna have a community meeting, um, at Studio Fifty-four, and I can get that information to you.
Yes.
I'll text it to you, but, uh, we have several neighborhood watch groups. I get text messages, um, from individual, uh, one, one of the senior citizens, Ms. Gwen, she lives on Urban Avenue, but it's, she's over that neighborhood, that neighborhood watch group, but they actually reach out and if that's, uh, you know, an area, and then we got the, the CAD as well, but we have different people that are already there doing the work. I think we just gotta connect the dots.
Yeah, and, and part of that Omaha piece is that, uh, what they've done is created that collaborative ne- network, and these are different communities. They started in North Omaha, but it's spread across the city. But exactly what they're doing is the neighborhoods have their, um, I guess their advocates or their, their people who are in charge of the neighborhood watches, and they just collaborate on everything. They're sharing information, they're sharing data, um, and that's what's important is let's connect the neighborhoods.
Okay, and we also have our coordinator, um, meter, all the neighborhood watch groups. We have a coordinator meeting, I get that date, because I don't know, but it's towards the end of the month.
Okay.
And then you'll get all the coordinators from the whole city, um, at that meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Begley?
I, I really liked Slide Eight where you're showing the, the crime statistics. I, I, I think when we had our training, we're trying to focus on metrics. I think getting information like this on some kind of dashboard where we can monitor whether crime's going up or down. I, I know we get these reports at times, whether it's through Cure Violence or we request it, but if we could build a dashboard so that we're not, um, we see this on a regular basis, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, they release them, uh, they keep up with them daily, but they, they release them quarterly. That might be a better timeframe to show up.
Or, or monthly, or, um, like, I understand there's reports, I don't know if everyone's getting those, but I guess we can talk about the best way to present the metrics, but just make sure the stuff, this information is readily available.
Okay.
I think, I mean, one of the things with the metrics, and we've talked about this before, is really being able to explain what it represents. Uh, sometimes it can be misleading. You know, the biggest thing is when you talk about homicides and murders, there's always been this battle of what is what. Homicide, of course, includes murders, murders does not include the homicide piece. So there's things we probably need to evaluate how we put those metrics out, I'm saying, to the community. Uh, one of the things we want to make sure we try to do is also, let's talk about what's happening between. Uh, we always talk about the bad, but let's start the messaging with the positive. What are the groups that are out here working? What are the people that is, you know, happening good? Because, uh, you know, we had a murder in January, um, on Terminal Court, and then we didn't have one for several weeks until we got, uh, Beveterde. But we didn't hear anything positive in between that. So that's one of the things we want to change with the media is, hey, it's great that we talk about what went wrong, but let's talk about what's going good, because, uh, we're still behind a little bit. I mean, we're four at this point, uh, where we were at ten, uh, this time last year, so
We were, I think we were twelve this time last year. So we're about one-third of what we were last year.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're down twenty-six percent, I think, on all Part One crimes. But, but you know, look, we all, we all know that, you know, I don't like using statistics for crimes, it's personal, because I know each one represents an individual. Uh, but the important thing to know is that with organizations like Cure Violence and some of the other grassroots programs that are, that are working, Police Department that has ramped up, uh, recruiting and stabilized the retention, so it's more visibility. Uh, you've got this council's foresight in authorizing the purchase of cameras, which is really having an effect on the speed with which they're able to make arrests. So all of that kind of cooks in there together, but, um, but we, we can absolutely try to make some of those available. I just, um, I, I agree with you, I think people interpret them differently.
Right.
If you live in an area, if you had a relative that was impacted by a homicide, I don't care that you've only had one for the year, and it's, it's, uh, it's a tough balance. Uh, Ca- Councilor Begley?
Yeah, I, I think that's why I, I like just the dashboard on there, because I feel like you do have someone report numbers at one point, and then someone else comes up with a different report, and it's, are they interpreting homicide versus murder the same? Right? And so you, you kind of get to those questions every time there's a new report. And I agree with you, we, we don't want to say, hey, look how great we're doing, because even one crime's too many. And so if you just take kind of the story out of it and just have a constant dashboard, it's not really anyone creating a story on it, it's just, it's just always there.
Gotcha.
And it's a consistent message, a- and, you know, you, we can have an explanation at the bottom that explains murder versus homicide, but it's just the same, the same data every time, not someone picking and choosing what they explain.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, I, I appreciate this, this is very good, and I appreciate the meetings you've had, they've been very informative.
Thank you. No more questions?
Um, Ms. Lewis, I want to thank you for being a partner, um, and, uh, we look forward to continuing to work with you to make our community better.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Mayor, next I've got, um, our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, is gonna talk about the fiscal condition of, um, our city finances.
Good morning, uh, Ms. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager, uh, Mr., I was gonna say City Attorney, but I don't see him sitting there. Um, this presentation for FY twenty-three is, um, just a small, a recap of sort of where we ended, um, the fiscal year, um, for FY twenty-three. So, um, this chart here is just a historical, uh, reference for our, uh, fund balance reserves. It provides a listing for the last fourteen years, um, for our fund balance reserves. And you can see here, um, just based on the chart where we sort of bottomed out in FY sixteen with, at our lowest point with fifty-four point fifty-four days. Um, however, FY twenty-three, we ended the fiscal year with, um, just over a hundred and twenty-nine, um, fund balance reserve days. Now I apologize, I'm gonna try to keep from coughing. This chart here just shows the composition of our fund balance reserves. You can see here from the chart uh that we experienced significant changes, starting within FY twelve, really through FY um sixteen. You can see the composition of our fund balance um was heavily relying on our OLOS reserves. Again, as we got to that sort of low point at fifty-four days in FY sixteen. But we've uh made great strides with uh reversing that sort of trend and um changing the composition of our fund balance reserves. So that it is um mostly um general fund reserves that uh we're reporting here. You can see we ended FY um twenty-three with sixty-five percent of our reserves being for the general fund and thirty-five percent being for um the OLOS. So in terms of our fund balance reserves, this chart just shows some of the projects um that uh the reserves have been set aside for. Now, we are required by generally accepted accounting principles to set aside reserves. Um, when we anticipate that we'll use reserves in the um upcoming fiscal year. Um, so we did set aside eleven million in the general fund. We projected we would use about fourteen million, but I do believe um based on some of the revenue trends that we've been um seeing, particularly in our sales taxes. And um some of our uh other um taxes um that we would not have to reserve all of our projected use. Um, there is the three and a half million that was set aside and have been allocated out to various departments as part of the FY um twenty-four mid-year budget. Um, three point six five million was set aside and allocated for Parks and Recreation Facility projects. Um, some of those projects include uh things such as the renovation of um the football field at Lake Bottom. Um, re- replacement of several restrooms and pavilions, particularly at Cooper Creek, Flat Rock, um Charlie Hill, Pop Austin, Lake Oliver, Rose Hill Park, Tillis Park. And replacing the uh playground at Flat, Flat, uh Flat Rock Park. Um, then we have the one point uh two million that was set aside as part of the FY twenty-four uh budget for the Integrated Waste Fund. Um, again, that was adjusted in the FY twenty-four budget as part of the mid-year that was approved at the last meeting. Uh, two point one million for public work facility projects. This includes um building, uh maintenance and um repair funding, as well as the uh relocation for our emergency um management office. And then in the OLOS fund, six point three million was set aside and allocated out to the Public Safety Departments as part of the FY twenty-four mid-year.
Ms. Alexander, excuse me just a minute.
Yes.
Council Crab has a question.
After you go through these fund balance reserves, can you break it down into days? Because on the prior, on the prior slide, you were talking about fund balance days and now you're talking about dollars. And so can you translate that, so we're talking in the same tense?
Yes, can I bring that back? Okay, thank you.
And excuse me one more.
When you say bring it back, not today, or you're gonna talk about it later in the presentation?
I don't have it later in.
Pardon?
At a later time.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah, it can be done today, just not.
She can't do it while she's standing there.
While I'm standing here.
She's, yeah.
Um, so some of the things that impact the, our fund balance reserves, again, um generally accepted counting, accounting principles really sort of dictate the timing in which we recognize our revenues. And as well as when expenditures are recognized. So re- reserves or revenues doesn't necessarily mean cash in the bank, obviously, because revenues are recognized when um our receivables are booked. Um, also, in terms of the fund balance projections, uh the number of reserve days fluctuates each year based on the value of an operating day. Um, for instance, in FY twenty-three, uh the value of a day was um five hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, whereas in FY twenty-four, the value of a day is just over six hundred thousand.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a.
Yes, ma'am, I'm.
And so I'm gonna go back to this.
Madam Finance Director, I'm sorry, just a moment, uh, Council Thomas?
It's on, it's on this slide. Oh, tell me what year this is.
This is fiscal year twenty-three, FY twenty-three.
Okay, and so in the FY twenty-three budget, we have three million dollars for the jail site master plan.
In the reserves, yes, ma'am.
In, in reserve.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And again, um, these projects, um, as I failed to mention a moment ago, they don't um impact the fund balance reserves that were previously reported. So the one hundred and twenty-nine days of reserves is after we've reserved and set aside these um, this use of fund balance reserves for these strategic um uses in our um FY twenty-four budget. So um, one of the things that I was referencing was the value of the reserves. The value of a day of reserves, um, again, um, it fluctuates from year to year. So five hundred and seventy thousand for FY twenty-three, it um is the value of a day, but FY twenty-four is over six hundred. So this same a pot of reserves, the hundred and twenty-nine days would be slightly lower if we use the value of a day for FY twenty-four. Uh, we'd actually be at about a hundred and twenty-three days as opposed to a hundred and twenty-nine. So in terms of the um general fund budget to actuals, this is our largest fund and these are the um, this chart just shows those revenue sources with the largest variances. Or categories, I should say, with the largest variances. Um, our sales taxes obviously coming in um over budget, uh what we initially, initially projected, I should say, as far as the budget. And keep in mind, when we're making these um budget projections, there's a considerable amount of time um that's remaining in the fiscal year when we're making the budget projections for the ensuing fiscal year. Um, what we also um like to do is be prudent in our recognition of the revenues. Um, and not just simply using one year of data, um particularly for some of these volatile revenue sources like our sales taxes and our franchises, franchise fees. Because um what we receive for those sources is sensitive to the market or uh sensitive to um climatic changes. And so what we do use is a uh three-year blended average in terms of our revenue projections when we're composing those budget projections. So seven point six million um difference from budget to actuals for sales taxes. The licenses and permits category, which includes occupation taxes and building permits, um four point nine million dollar difference. Um, the charges for services, which is a large variety of um revenue sources, um, you know, which includes all the user fees um that people pay for parks. Um, to utilize our facilities, particularly for Parks and Recreation. Um, two point seven million dollar difference there. Our franchise fees, uh two point six million dollar difference. Um, interest income, you know, the amount of interest income really just depends on the amount of funding that we have available to invest. And so um that difference is two point two uh million dollars. Um, property taxes, which includes real and personal property, a one point six million dollar difference in what we budgeted and what we actually received. Um, the insurance premium, um, this amount is um, it's a one percent gross receipt tax on life insurance policies. Um, two and a half percent on property and casualty, and this money is collected by the state and then divvied out to the counties based on population. So we really have no way to determine in term, from a projection standpoint, what that, what that amount will be. And typically, what we utilize is the prior year number in terms of making the budget um projections for the upcoming year. I will say that um for FY twenty-four, we have exceeded uh what we collected in FY twenty-three. Um, I believe it is um about um, um. Oh, I forgot the number, the number is escaping me, but it's more than sixteen point eight million that we've received. Uh, we receive this revenue in October of every year. Um, and then there's the miscellaneous and intergovernmental revenue, um, that being just over a million. And then our fines and forfeitures, particularly um the expenses that um fines and forfeitures for our Superior Court. Um, exceeding budget expectations of about five hundred thousand.
Hold on just a second, Council Begley.
So I, I really like this slide, uh, it focuses on revenue. Is there a similar slide that explains the expenses?
Uh, no, not in this presentation.
Can, can we get one, just so we compare, like, hey, we got more revenue than expected, were our expenses more or less than we expected?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hope somebody's taking note because I didn't bring a pencil with me.
Yeah, she, she's got.
Okay, thank you. So sales tax collections, um, you've probably seen this chart. This chart just really shows a historical reference for our um sales tax collections by fiscal year. Um, you can see that we've been on an increasing trend here um from FY eighteen to FY twenty-one. Um, slight decrease from twenty uh one to twenty-two, uh, but then an increase again from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three. Um, you'll see the, the note here that it includes one-time uh Department of Revenue audit monies. Um, we did receive notification uh really sort of late, um, I, I would say it would not, no, um, August, September timeframe from the Department of Revenue. Uh, where they had, due to a system conversion, failed to remit to us um all of our sales tax collections from August of twenty-two. Through June of twenty-three. And so um because of that era on their part, they remitted that, that money to us. And, and we, it was um applicable to FY twenty-three, so it was recorded in FY twenty-three. So again, as far as other local options, sales tax money, um, the budget for FY twenty-four, um, this is really sort of a, a look ahead, I guess, uh for FY twenty-four. Um, if we collect the same amount of money that we did in twenty, for FY twenty-four, that we did in FY twenty-three from January through June. Um, we'll look to um end the fiscal year FY twenty-four with um just over forty-seven million dollars. Um, this would e- equate to being about a one percent increase year over year. Or an additional um four hundred and fifty-five thousand above FY um forty-three, I'm FY twenty-three uh collections. And so we'll use this information, obviously, as we are drafting the revenue projections for FY twenty-five. Right now, that three-year blended average from um, from a sales tax standpoint is about eight percent. So we'll look to um have that increase uh uh from a budgetary standpoint for FY twenty-five of about eight percent. So in terms of the franchise fees here, again, franchise fees is a volatile revenue source in that um the amount we receive really depends on consumer usage. Um, and other factors such as climate change. Um, this chart here just depicts a year-over-year changes for electric, gas, and water utility. Um, as you can see here, that there's been a c- consistent uh increase for gas and water, but electric utilities have seen the um, the most fluctuation. Um, we actually had our um, um, the presentation of our um annual um franchise fee from Georgia Power a couple of weeks ago. And um they did provide some um insight into, you know, some of the um reasons why we see uh fluctuations. I think this particular year, um, there were um less customers um in which uh utilized the, the power. But, but uh more power usage, so um, and then also, you know, the, when they receive rate increases from the Georgia Public um Service Commission. Um, that also impacts what we receive to some extent because it is a percentage of um the fees uh that they charge for electric service. So this uh next slide just shows the historical occupation tax revenue that we receive. You can see here that it's steadily increased over the last four fiscal years. Um, and I believe that um we'll see an additional increase as more businesses are brought into compliance. Um, and um eventually that'll level out to more predictable, more predictable norms. Um, general property taxes here, um, again, this chart just shows year-over-year increases for real and personal property tax revenues. Um, as you can see, it's increased uh approximately an average of two and a half percent year over year. So when we're making those um budget projections in terms of, you know, what we'll actually see in property tax revenue. Um, we're using that, if, we're using budget projection, uh, we're using actual information to make those projections, not necessarily what is reflected in the tax digest. I know tax digest um increase usually shows a different number, a much larger number. But um year over year, it's been about a two and a half percent average increase that we've received in general property tax revenue. And obviously, um, for FY twenty-three, um, we'll just have to see what that looks like uh because of the reduction in the millage uh that was adopted as part of the budget. As I made some reference about the insurance premium taxes, again, this is a tax that is not collected by the city. It is collected by the state and allocated out to the counties based on population. And um, here it is, I have the number written down. For FY twenty-four, um, we received eighteen point three million, uh, which equates to being a nine percent increase or one and a half million more than um what we received for FY twenty-three. That Mr. Mayor concludes um that particular presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions if you have.
Council Begley.
On slide ten regarding the occupation taxes, um, sorry if I, if I missed this, but does that increase? Fiscal year twenty twenty-three would have ended June thirtieth, which is really before we started uh big conversations about our business license occupation tax process. So, so that big uptick, is that, are, are there any additional collection efforts that created that larger increase than normal? I, I guess that's the first question. It, did, did we start those additional collection efforts before June thirtieth that caused this number to be bigger? And I guess the next question would be if for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, how much would we expect it to be larger as we collect some of those older occupation taxes?
Well, um, in terms of the collection efforts, you know, the delinquency um notices, the courtesy delinquent notices didn't go out until, until August.
Okay.
Um, so from our standpoint, I would say no. I mean, from a enforcement standpoint, I would say no because the, the list wasn't provided to code enforcement until September. Uh, but we did have people that were um, you know, voluntarily, I would say, coming into compliance. Another thing I would say from the occupation tax standpoint is that it's a gross receipt tax. So as businesses charge more, as the sales tax increase, I would expect to some degree um to see the occupation tax increase. Because that means that uh more sales are occurring. And if more sales are occurring in terms of the dollar amount that people are spending with businesses, then the amount of the gross receipt tax that they pay us would also um increase. They expect, we would expect an increase, to see an increase in those gross receipt tax.
Okay, so we, so for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, are we expecting an, an even larger bump as we collect some of those older occupation taxes?
I do anticipate that we'll do. Close to the amount for twenty-three than, than what we're doing, um, than what we did for, for twenty-four than what we did for twenty-three. I'll say up to this point of time in last year, well, up to through February of last year, we collected and received about three and a half million dollars. In um occupation tax um monies, whether it's in the revenue line or whether it's. whether it's in the revenue line or whether it's in our balance sheet account pending processing. And up through February of this year, we're at about 7 million.
I know you're actively pursuing a lot of those older occupation taxes. When do you think we can get an update of kind of the amount collected since we started that process back in August, August, September, as well as maybe an updated number of the amount that we think is uncollectible?
I'm hoping that the next presentation will address some of those questions.
Is that all, Counselor?
That's correct. That's it.
Counselor Davis?
On the occupational tax, your financial forecasts are based on 2023 right now, right? The last one we got in September, would that be based on 2023?
Yes, I think I'm, based on through September of '23?
That was the last one we got.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be 2023, right?
From July through September of 2023.
Right, and you're going January to January for occupation tax?
Uh, the licenses expire every calendar year, but from a revenue standpoint, a reporting standpoint, we report based on fiscal year.
So you're reporting June to June?
July to June.
July to June, so '23 to '24, so you're still, September would be in the '24 then?
Uh, from a fiscal year standpoint, yes, sir.
Okay, we don't have a number for that yet.
In terms of what, what number are we looking for?
Total. I know with the budget, the budgeted amount is 15.1, 15.2, but we don't have that number yet of total collected.
No, not total collected, but we do have what we've collected on a month-to-month.
Well, I would hope so. Now, I'm talking about September. That's the last forecast, so I'm assuming we'll get one again. The 2023 is 18.8 million in occupation tax. Why did, why was there a reduction of 15 million budgeted for 2024?
Well, again, we typically receive the bulk of our occupation tax revenue around this time, within the March-April timeframe is when we typically receive the bulk of our occupation tax revenue. People typically wait until it gets closer to time to renew, which their renewal deadline is April 1st.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about budgeted, okay? That's total collected for 2023.
When we're...
But we budgeted 15, 15.1, 15.2, maybe 15.5 for 2024.
Yeah, when we're doing the budget...
What do we budget for 2023, do you know?
We utilize, I believe it was 15, 14.5 million? I'm not sure. Let me go back.
So you're almost 4, almost 5 million, 4.5 million over the budgeted amount?
Maybe it was 15. I have to get that information.
Are you expecting this year to even be higher than the budgeted amount?
Uh, yes, I do.
So it could be similar to 2023?
Possibly.
Okay. All right, the, the total accumulation, all of your slides there, does that equate to the 129 days, total days in the fund balance?
Yes.
That's what's equating to that increase of 129?
The 129 is a collection of all of the revenue sources, not just these that you see here. The ones that you see here have the largest variances between the budget and what we actually collected.
So there's other contributing revenue that's not up here that factors into that 129?
Yes, and there's also some revenue sources where we didn't meet the budget.
Okay, okay.
So again, these categories that you see are just the ones that have the largest variances.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Kogel?
Can you go back to the sales tax, sales tax collection by fiscal year and explain what the DOR is again?
So there was some, there was a large audit that was done in FY23 by the Department of Revenue, in which they, they didn't, they don't provide to us all the specific details, but they did tell us that there was a large, there was an audit that was done that resulted in us receiving a large influx in additional revenue. I believe it was about 3, 3.3 million in additional revenue that we received. This audit that they did, what was, they went back several years on whomever they conducted the audit on, and that resulted in additional revenue for us of about 3, just over $3 million.
Is that, is that something that we missed?
No.
This, the Georgia Department of Revenue?
Right, right.
So I think, the money, it's not anything that we missed, or it's not, and it's not an audit of Columbus, Georgia. It's DOR and something internally, maybe that they did or missed statewide. And when they discovered that there was an error or omission, we received a check, and not just Columbus, but checks went out all over the state.
Sure, I understand that, but isn't that something, I mean, would we not have anticipated like our revenue being a certain amount from DOR and then it not being collected and...
No, no, and the thing is with DOR, when they wire transfer us a deposit, we don't get any information with it. You don't get any data. There's no point-of-sales data. It's, you know, here is your check for 3.5 million dollars. Trust us, it's right. You don't get any information.
There was actually an occasion back when Jack Rogers was the Budget Chair, and he raised the issue. He said, wait a minute. He said, all of our occupancy, occupation taxes are up, but our sales taxes are down, and they just sent us a check. No explanation, just sent us a check. And the item that you're talking about, I think there was a company that was erroneously categorized, and all of the sales tax revenue went dumping into their home office in Atlanta. And then when they realized that they hadn't paid all the cities that had a location of his, they had to reshuffle the deck and send it back out. So that, I think that was where that...
Yeah, and we've had legislation asking for point-of-sales data over the last 10, 15 years, and that legislation has never passed. That would allow us to know that this store, and this store, and this store, they did or did not report, so we don't have any information. It, the sales tax goes to the state, and then they wire transfer you a check, and say, here's your check.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we know that revenue comes in at different times of the year, mainly a large portion at the end of the year, first of the year. The fund, correct me if I'm wrong, the fund balance, we tend to use that as a checking account, payroll and things like that, right? I mean, we go in there at any given time over the course of the year. It could be extremely low. It could be extremely high based on, or high based on collections. Now, we, that number fluctuates. Am I, I think, am I right on that, how we use, we use that? That's our, somewhat our checking account.
It's fluid.
The fund balance reserves, they are fluid, but it doesn't equate to being a checking account, so to speak.
Well, let me not say a checking account, but...
It doesn't always represent cash.
And there's never, I mean, it doesn't like fluctuate, you know, from one month to another to some low number and then goes back.
Spikes are seasonal, like when the property tax come in around October, November, it goes way up.
It's probably two or three months ago when you came to us, you reported that we had 90 days in the reserve.
Ninety-five.
Fund balance, 95. And then recently, you come back, and now we have 129.
Yes, this is as of the end of FY23. And so the 95 days takes into account all of the utilize, all of the uses that we had fund balance in the budget and, you know, assuming that we will meet our expenditure, adhere to our expenditure budgets and meet our revenue expectations, we anticipate that we'll end FY24 with about 95 days.
Okay, let me, okay, that's what I wanted to zero in on. So right now, we're talking about 129. When the mayor starts preparing his budget, when you bring it to us, what are you anticipating that number to be in the fund balance, 129, or did I just hear you say 90 days?
That's being fine-tuned as we develop the budget, but where we were based on what we projected for FY24 and the use, the utilization of the, some of the reserves as part of the FY24 mid-year, at that point in time, it was about 95 days.
And that would be the use of carryovers that they get spent in the last year, but you're going to use them this year?
That would be the use of reserves for some of the projects that...
Not including salary savings.
Not including any salary savings, that's correct. Yeah.
So those projects, they didn't get done in '23, they'll get done in '24, let's just say '24.
It's assuming that we'll spend down, we'll adhere to the budget. No one's going to go over budget for FY24, and that will meet the revenues that we at least projected for the general fund.
Okay. And you're, again, you're projecting 90-plus days when we get into the budget session?
Well, it's still being developed, but it'll be probably very close to that for, because we'll revise the FY24 projections as the budget is being developed. We will have more data in which to make that, make those projections than what we have a couple of months ago.
And that would include some of the more recent expenditures to be added to the budget?
It would, and it would also include what we anticipate we'll see in salary savings through the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's all the questions.
Well, and let me just say to Counselor Begley's question about an expense slide, I think that would be good.
And one quick question to Ms., I'm sorry. A couple of counselors have asked if we could get an email copy of this.
It's...
Yeah, I'll do that as soon as I get back.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, but just off, are our expenses overall up or down for the government? He asked for the slide, and you'll bring that back. And normally during the monthly update, you know, you tell what revenues are up, expenses are up, and what percentage spent, and so forth, so on. I don't know if you know today, but overall, of expenses, when you, when you look at revenue, and we're saying sales tax up 7.6 million, license permits up 4.9, you know, all these other categories are up, including franchise fees and so forth. Nothing, we don't have any revenue categories that, down based on what you reported today.
For the prior fiscal year or the current fiscal year? For the prior fiscal year?
Yeah, what you, what you reported. And so he asked if you had the expenses for that same fiscal year, honestly. Are the expenses overall up or down?
Well, from a budget perspective, when we finalized the budget, the expenditure budget for FY23, we did utilize some reserves. Typically, when we're balancing the budget, for those departments that are, that come under budget, we will just reallocate those to cover those departments that went over. I do know for FY23, and I don't, I can't think of the exact dollar amount, but I do know for FY23, we did utilize a little bit of reserves to cover all of the budgeted expenditures for the prior fiscal year. And that's not typical. Typically, we can cover all of the expenses, all of our obligations, I should say, not just expenses, our obligations with those departments that come under budget, but we were not able to do that for F... Overall, but we weren't able to do that for FY23 from an expenditure standpoint. Did go up slightly.
Okay.
But I'll bring that back more specifically.
Yeah, just revenue and then expenses on the other side would paint a picture that, I mean, we're doing great in terms of revenue, or we did great. How did we do with expenses? So you can bring that back. Thank you. And so next, we're going to have the Revenue Division update, and it's going to be done by Deputy City Manager Hodge and Angelica Alexander. Hodge is going to start out with, and then followed by the Finance Director.
So, good morning, Mayor, members of council, city manager, and Mr. City Attorney. I'm just going to make some opening comments related to the Revenue Division update today. They've been working really hard to put in place policies and procedures, work the delinquent accounts. But there are a couple of things that this presentation today will go over. But first, we still need to discuss the internal audit report that alleged the $45 million to be missing. That still needs to be addressed. Second, the Finance Director will provide a status of the enforcement for those businesses who have not renewed their license and considered delinquent. And then finally, the Finance Director will provide a look ahead for 2024 renewal season and beyond. But the false information that was reported by the internal auditor that there was $45 million missing needs to be corrected. This internal audit report is on the official record of the city and posted to the city's website. It has been confirmed by the Finance Department with validated receipts, and also validated by Troutman Pepper, as reported by Charlie Peeler on January 23rd of 2024, that this money is in the bank. And I think that it's very important that the official record of the city be corrected. The last communication that I had with the internal auditor, and it was through the Audit Committee Chair, Counselor Begley, was January the 12th. She had emailed me and said that she was still at it when asked about the progress to validate the $45 million. A corrected internal audit report needs to be officially presented and filed for the record of the City of Columbus to be correct. I'm asking the City Council to make this request of the internal auditor to prepare this corrective report. This continues to be mentioned on social media, in the public. We're getting questions from state agencies. I anticipate our bond rating agency meetings tomorrow will ask that same question, and we need to have an official response on the record with the city. It's really been a black eye on the City of Columbus undeservingly. So as the Finance Director comes forward to address the other topics related to the update today, I really hope that City Council will consider this request and require that this be corrected. And I would also think that as a certified public accountant, that the internal auditor would want to make sure that this correction is done as well. So I appreciate your consideration in this request.
Hello again?
Oh, hang on. Counselor Crabbe?
Earlier in the report that Angelica just gave to us, she made mention of that more businesses are brought into compliance, which seems to me is a way of saying that there are some funds that were not collected. That's her way of saying that. And so I'm not sure about the request that was just brought in front of this body. And so I'm not sure about the request that was just, um, brought in front of this body because there, because there were some funds that were not collected as per what the Finance Director just said in her previous presentation. The quote was more businesses that they anticipate more businesses are brought into compliance. That means that they have not collected business license or occupational tax on some businesses and that is why they are not in compliance.
And I think the challenge is though, is, is the way that other piece was presented as part of a, uh, a formal internal audit. And, uh, that, it, it's just got to be corrected. It's been identified as being misinformation.
We have asked on several occasions.
Different, different levels, not only, uh, Charlie Peeler, who went in there and got the, uh, audit firm that he was using, the forensic auditors that came in there and sampled them and stated that they had, all that money had been deposited. That money was identified in a notebook and it was also identified, uh, in what was given out to the, um, to, uh, to the public and to council. And so it's, I, I think it's a, it's a correct request, it's a reasonable request.
We have, we have asked, okay, so we, we have two numbers, one from the internal auditor, one from Charlie Peeler. We have two numbers. We have asked on several occasions that if those two numbers are not correct, then what number do you guys have? Does the Finance Department have? And we have never been given the Finance Department's numbers. I think that the, I think that the pressure should be on the Finance Department to give us the number, not, not the internal auditor, because all she does is she works off of the information that is given to her by the Finance Department.
What I will say though is the reason I think this is so distressing for, for finance is that information was given to the internal auditor. All the information and access, the, the forensic auditor that was working with Charlie Peeler had no problem accessing that information. And yet, three months later, our internal auditor hasn't, is still working at it, has never gotten to where they were able to go in or, or went in to look for those numbers. We said from the very beginning, look at that information. We, we begged the internal auditor, look at that information and, uh, and either refute what is being said by Finance, which is fine, because we were after the truth, not a number, or correct your, your findings, because she claims she didn't have access to some of that information. She's had access for the last three months and there's been no information coming from that. And meanwhile, it had already been addressed in about a two-week span with another audit firm. It, it, it's, it's irrational to sit here and argue that that should not be taken off.
My experience, my experiences with internal audits since I've been sitting here has always been that the internal auditor does their report and then the department comes back and has a response to the report. So I would, I would assume if we're going to follow that procedure, that the Finance Department would, in their report, give us the correct number. But to this date, the Finance Department has never given us a number. So I, once again, in, believe that it is not our responsibility to correct, you know, by a vote or whatever, to correct that misinformation.
The auditor just needs to do her job and look at that information.
It's, the Finance Department needs to do their job and tell us the numbers that they think are correct. They've never told us those numbers.
Council Begley?
So just to remind everyone, there are two different sections to the Troutman Pepper report. There is the uncollected section through the first seventeen pages. And after that, starts on page eighteen referring to the, the missing money. The Finance Department and Troutman Pepper all said the number is zero. The Finance Department has said that since December, the number is zero. So we've cer, we've heard it from Troutman Pepper, again, yes, you're.
He just said that it was.
For, for uncollected, so remember, there's two situations. Uncollected and, and the, that Troutman Pepper talked about and the forty five of missing. Okay, the forty five that was considered missing, Finance has said was zero and Troutman Pepper said was zero. And so I, so, so Finance has given their number. So on the uncollected, that's still an open topic, understood. For the forty five million that was considered, that was called missing, Finance and Troutman Pepper has also that number is zero. So I, I, I guess that'd be the question for Council, what regarding the forty five, not, not the uncollected topic, just on that forty five that was called missing, what else would we like to see to confirm that the number is zero?
Uncollected is missing.
It is actually, so there actually is a difference. So, so these details are important. So the internal auditor said, we show revenue that was never deposited. And that has been proven, Troutman Pepper said that number is incorrect, it is zero. If there is revenue, the money was deposited. The first seventeen pages of the Troutman Pepper report refer to money that was never processed, never collected and therefore had no revenue. Those are two different topics, regardless if we want to make it simple. I feel like we've got to get into the details and be accurate with our statements. They are two different topics. The internal auditor was referring to revenue that was not deposited and Troutman Pepper and Finance has said that the number is zero. So I, I guess I'm, that's my question for City Council. Do, do we need more information to understand this? Like, what would City Council like to see to confirm that number is zero?
The City Manager?
And, and so, Mayor, I, I was going to just say what, uh, Council Begley just said. There are two separate matters that we're dealing with, two separate matters. One is, and that's why Deputy City Manager Hodge addressed a matter and the Finance Director is going to address matter number two. There are two separate matters. The forty five million that she stood at that podium as a CPA and said is missing. There were no bank statements checked, uh, to review. There were no deposit slips reviewed or transaction data, but said it was missing. Finance Department said all along, there is no missing money, all money is in the bank. We have the deposit slips, we have all bank transactions, uh, we have the canceled checks to prove that. And so when Finance and staff said it, we needed someone to validate that what they said is true. And that's why Troutman and Pepper was retained along with Acuity, the, uh, uh, the forensic accounting firm, to validate that what Finance Department said in terms of forty five million being deposited, Charlie Peeler and Acuity, the forensic auditors, validated the money is in the bank. There's zero dollars missing. So, and that report from the internal auditor where she said this money is missing is out there on our website for people to review. That's a false statement. The report is inaccurate and we need to remove that report from our website and we need to set the record straight because state agencies are looking and we're going to be dealing with fund agencies and they are looking and they're looking at something that's false and we know it's false. And so if you want to talk about item number two, a separate matter, which would be delinquency notices went out to businesses. They did not come and renew their license. We did not send out our people to knock on the door and say, to say, you didn't renew your license, uh, you didn't receive a delinquent notice, but you did as of September. You, you need to come and take care of your business if you're going to be in business. And so those are the things that Peeler, the second part that you were talking about, that the Finance Director is getting ready to talk to you about, has nothing to do with the forty five million, that's a separate matter. And so we need to set the record straight on the forty five million. The, the, the internal auditor could come and stand right there at that podium, could come and stand right there at that podium and tell you whether what she said is true or not. Get her to come and do it. Get her to come and stand at that podium and tell you that what I told you on whatever date it was, I stand by it and it's true. Get her to come and stand there and say that. So we want to move on to part two, Mayor, uh, and, um, which is a separate matter. But we need to deal with the false information on the forty five million dollars.
All right.
Uh, so Finance Director, Angelica Alexander.
Just a second, um, Council Thomas?
Um, I was going to let, going to let this go, but I can't do that. I think we need to be very, very careful of the words that we use. When you say that the internal auditor came up here and gave us false information, that implies that she knew it was not correct and that is not the case. She said to us that it was unaccounted for. She did not say missing. And I will remind the City Manager and the Finance Department and the Deputy City Manager that the audit, the auditor is under the direction of council and the mayor and not under the direction of the City Manager.
I, I'm clear on that, I know the org chart. I never said she was under me and.
But you act like it, Mr. City Manager. When you call her into a meeting the day after she gives her a report.
She said money was missing.
No. When you call her into a meeting the day after she gives her a report. Somebody did and you and the, and the Deputy City Manager were there and the mayor was there and you accused her of lying.
I did not, I was invited to a meeting.
That's not true. Now, you, you were just talking about being careful with the words we use, that's incorrect. In fact, we had two councils that showed up to sit in there and they can verify.
I am not going to vote that she put, that, that she says whatever it is that the City, Deputy City Manager wanted, it's not the case. And I think we need to be very, very careful that we don't impinge on somebody's reputation, either yours or hers, uh, and I, I just.
We have, we have got to get this addressed in some manner. Uh, because it is, it's, it's a, regardless of the information, how the information came out, it, it is creating an environment that puts the city in a bad light. And there's a very simple process that could be followed to determine if in fact that, that, that bad light is warranted or if the auditor needed to say, hey, listen, I didn't have access to this the first time, now that I've looked at it, I see that those deposits have been made. It's very simple, all she has to do is look at it and, and make a determination as to whether or not it validates what she said or whether or not, you know, she didn't have enough information to start with to be able to make that call.
Well, I'm sorry that I have, um, lost my temper, but I did. And, um, it, there, there it is. I just, I just can't, uh, I, I just can't go along with this, I'm sorry. I can't do that.
Well, and, and Mayor, we're going to call Angelica, but I've got her, she can print what the auditor presented and it said missing, money is missing.
The money.
It's in there, it's in her presentation.
All right, let's move on, Council Crabbe?
Just one more clarification. Charlie Peeler was, was hired by Council to go into the Finance Department at the same time that the internal auditor was there. It was not a response to the internal auditor's report. I want to make that very, very clear because there was an implication that he was brought in as a result of the internal auditor's report. He was not. He was brought in to work alongside the internal auditor's, um, investigation. Well, audit.
I'm not sure I understand the point. Well, we'll move on to.
You talking to me? Mayor, would you, can we get this chair?
Can I get Baylet to escort Mr. Smith out of here? He, he just shouted out liar. We're not, not from, not from, not from the audience, I have never heard that, I've never heard.
Called liars from the audience before.
Well, I have never heard that before. I've never heard that before.
Oh, we've heard it plenty.
Well, I heard it this time. Absolutely. If I hear somebody call any of y'all that or me that or anybody around this table that, we're going to, we're going to have them.
Ms. Ellin has called me a liar, several occasions.
I didn't, I've never heard that word. I don't recall, well, let's, let's move on, we'll, we'll make sure I, anybody that disrespects a counselor to that level out here, we're going to get rid of them.
So, um, this, excuse me, this presentation today is just to, um, provide a third-of-day update. Uh, we'll be providing these periodic updates to the council, um, to the City Manager, um, and the mayor regarding, um, the revenue division and our, our progress. Um, first, in terms of, um, the division, there's a restructuring, um, that has taken place. Uh, there's some personnel changes that have taken place. There are some duties and responsibilities of remaining staff that we'll, uh, soon implement as we gain some efficiencies in some of our billing process, billing processes. Um, the largest, uh, change in terms of some of the staffing, um, responsibilities would be, uh, transitioning of the collection staff to, uh, focus on collecting more revenues for the Finance Department. Um, currently, uh, there is an RFP out for, uh, ambulance billing services. I would say eighty-five to ninety percent of what they do is bill for, um, ambulance services. And if that is going out to a vendor, we'll be able to shift some of the responsibilities from a collection standpoint, particularly for collections on current or delinquent accounts to some of the, uh, to the collection staff that's housed within the Finance Department. Um, additional temporary staffing has been authorized by the City Manager. Uh, permanent positions for these positions that are denoted here will be requested in the FY twenty five budget from the Finance Department. Um, that includes an administrative assistant, additional licensed and tax clerks, additional revenue auditor and analyst to help with some of the reporting aspects that we'll like to put in place sort of moving forward so that we can provide you, um, with, um, up-to-date information on demand, um, as well as an additional, um, Assistant Finance Director. Um, I, I will like to say though that, uh, some of these positions may be challenging to recruit on a temporary basis. I just don't know if we're going to, um, get the level of talent that's needed to have impactful change in this division, um, with the positions being temporary. I'd love to have them on a more permanent basis, uh, even before the next, um, fiscal year to provide more stability. But, um, for, as of right now, um, City Manager has au, authorized these positions on a temporary basis. Um, in terms of some of the policy changes that were, um, highlighted throughout the internal audit process as well as the Troutman Pepper report, uh, we are obviously still reviewing and updating some of our operational policies and procedures. Uh, we have implemented changes to, um, the processing of the mail. Um, we're actually logging all the mail that comes, um, into the office. We've implemented some changes to the handling of, of cash , um, to help gain some efficiencies with our end-of-day, um, cash ba, uh, balancing as well as, um, implemented some changes, um, with regard to enforcement notification to code enforcement. Um, we're also conducting weekly system improvement or online migration meetings. Um, this includes, uh, staff from the, um, IT Department as well as inspectors in codes, um, and finance. Um, one of the, um, changes that I. Um, one of the, um, changes that I hope we will be able to implement within the next couple of weeks, um, from a process improvement standpoint, and it's, it's currently being tested and developed, but to have all of the code enforcement notifications, um, remain within the software system that we use. Right now, um, it is a, uh, manual process in which, um, there's an email of sorts that goes out, um, to code enforcement, um, on a, um, daily, weekly basis. Um, code enforcement will, um, go out and, um, inspect, you know, that business that, uh, we've received notification on that they're, uh, maybe in a delinquent status or maybe behind on their excise taxes or whatever the case may be that would require code enforcement. But it's a manual process. Um, code enforcement, they will work that case and then they provide to us a, um, printout of sorts that, um, um, says what the resolution was, whether they issued a warning, whether they issued a citation. Um, and we are taking those, um, notifications and, um, um, attaching them to the, uh, business account in the system. Hopefully, moving forward, the notification process from start to finish will remain in the system in that we will, um, do away with, uh, the manual paper processes, um, related to code enforcement, um, cases. Because we do send code enforcement, and, and we're supposed to send code enforcement out, um, more than just once a year in terms of, uh, delinquent accounts, um, as it relates to, um, their taxes or, like I say, anything else that just would require enforcement of our city code. So we are all hands on deck. Obviously, um, the city manager and the deputy city manager has, um, loaned, I should say, um, the finance department, some employees, to help organize some of the files, putting them in their rightful place, um, and setting those files aside that will be destroyed when it's time to do so. Um, we are still under the hold right now, and so we're not able to, um, destroy these files if they are, um, set for destruction. And of go- and of course, we're using the, uh, retention, um, um, policy setting forth by the state in terms of how long we keep our files. Uh, but these files that you see here, which are files and not checks as you were led to believe, um, have been either, um, um, filed in its appropriate place or set aside for, um, destruction in the future. So you can see there's a before and after picture here of an office. Um, I believe that was on the news of what it was previously with all the files and the way that it looks now with the assistance for the, from the loaned employees. So just to recap in terms of where we are, um, this is the sort of third recap of this magnitude of the three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven delinquent accounts that were turned over to code enforcement. Um, code enforcement has, um, gone through the entire list. Um, out of that list, they have issued, um, one thousand, uh, four warning citations. And then they have, um, identified as either closed or renewed or out of business, two thousand five hundred and fifty-three, um, accounts, uh, with four hundred and fifty-nine of those being out of counting, uh, which means that code enforcement has no jurisdiction out of counting. Uh, five hundred and fifty-nine of the non-compliance issues have been resolved. And, um, just, um, over half of the businesses have confirmed to be out of business by code enforcement. And so, um, in the past, what we've done, where we receive notification that a business is confirmed to be out of business by code enforcement, is, um, nothing. Are we making no- I won't say nothing. We do it, we put a note on the account, but there's nothing else that happens, um, to that account other than that note. Um, well, now that they've completed the list, what we're gonna do is go in for those businesses that they have gone physically to and confirmed that they're out of business, we are going to, um, still put the note on the account, but then we're gonna change, um, the status of that account to, uh, inactive and suspended so that, um, we know from a reporting standpoint all of those, uh, businesses that have been, um, confirmed, um, as out of business by code enforcement so that they don't continue to appear on the reporting that we're going to continue to fine tune for you all and the public, um, really sort of moving forward. Um, the active licenses, um, processed to date, again, we've done this snapshot, snapshot at three points of, uh, in three points of time, back in October, then in January, and now in March. And you can see, um, that we've made progress on the licenses that we've processed for twenty twenty through, um, twenty twenty-three. So, um, this chart here just, um, provides a snapshot as a point in time for week ten. Just, uh, up to week ten of the, uh, year, uh, the calendar year, actually, uh, for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four. You can see how many licenses, uh, we processed as up to week ten, um, going back from, like I said, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. And, um, you can see here just from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, a market increase of where we were, um, as of week ten of twenty twenty-three, with a thirty-seven percent increase in licenses processed, um, in the revenue division. As far as the lot box, which represents our pending accounts to be processed, um, we have a total of six hundred and forty-nine accounts pending processing. Um, about a hundred and eighty-five of those are identified as problem accounts, meaning that we've sent a letter out to the business saying, hey, for whatever reason, we're not able to, um, process your renewal. Um, the dollar value in total for, um, our, um, pending prob- uh, pending, uh, pending renewals is, uh, two point six million, uh, with just over two million, um, being those accounts that are still pending. And this is up through the, um, up through last Friday, the eighth of March. Um, and we have five hundred and, um, fifteen thousand identified as the value of those problem accounts. This is money that we have, but renewals, uh, not yet processed. So in terms of occupation tax revenue, um, occupation tax revenue does represent a, um, good portion of the overall general fund revenue. And just through this, um, slide in here for, um, informational purposes in terms of, um, really sort of where we are, um, you know, dating occupation tax revenue up through the end of, um, February, um, as well as, um, the prior fiscal years, um, for FY twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three. Um, the occupation tax revenue, uh, represents about an average of nine percent of the overall, uh, general fund revenue, um, for those applicable years. And we obviously are not at that point, um, up through this point in time because, again, most of the occupation tax revenue that we receive, a good portion of it is received in the month of March, um, and April. So as far as the occupation tax gap, I think this is, um, a topic that was just, um, just discussed here today. Um, and as far as the tax gap, you know, a tax gap occurs when a taxpayer either intentionally or inadvertently failed to file a required return, um, either altogether or on time. Um, points, uh, to consider for the, uh, occupation tax gap analysis is that occupation taxes is an income tax, basically, on the economic activity and earnings of business. We cannot accurately determine what those gross receipts would be for a particular business in any year. Uh, we just don't know that information. Plus, the city does not receive any third-party reporting information for businesses. You know, like the IRS has a, they have a pretty good idea of what you should be reporting in terms of income as an individual because of that third-party reporting information that they receive, whether it's via ten ninety-nine or W-2. Uh, we don't receive any information of that kind for businesses. And so, um, I said all that to say, if we were to just assume that the last tax prepayment that was applied to a business account, if that indicates subsequent tax payments, then the value of delinquent accounts from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three is estimated to be about three point four seven million.
Council Begley?
So I, I'm glad we have a number, but I've got a bunch of questions about the number. So, so I, I guess to clarify, so what's the difference between the prepayment and the actual payment?
Well, the city's tax, occupation tax return is, uh, for two years. So when you are, um, pe- making a payment, what you're really doing is making a payment for the ensuing year, or for the current year, I should say. And that payment that you made for the current year will apply against any tax liability that you have for the next year. Um, so for us, it's considered to be, uh, a prepayment of sorts. Um, businesses could, um, report zero, although you're not really, you don't, they don't really need to do that. Estimate zero and then just always true it up, um, with us the, the next year. But, uh, most do not do that. Um, they do estimate, um, they do provide an estimate for the, um, current year. And whatever they pay us, it just applies towards their tax liability for the next year. Even if that results in being a credit, if they have, uh, lower gross receipts than they actually estimate it, uh, that would result in a, a creditor source for that particular year. And then the next year, they'll make a payment of estimated taxes to be used for the following year.
Of that three point four seven million, how much of that is for businesses that are now closed so that we don't expect to collect it?
Well, um, out of that three point four seven million, um, two point four million is for those accounts that, um, have been identified as closed. Um, and they, by code enforcement, and that either means that they are out of county, does include out of county because we don't have any enforcement out of county. Um, but it also includes those businesses that are, um, just out of business, but within Muskogee County. If we drill down even further, out of that three point four seven million, about one point six five million is for those businesses that are in Muskogee County but have been verified by code enforcement as just being out of business.
Okay. If we can get th- those numbers you just mentioned, um, like as a follow-up, just so we can refer to them. I'm, I'm taking notes, but it's, that'd be helpful. Um, what, does that, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, does that include alcohol as well, or is that focused just on occupation tax?
That focus is just on occupation tax.
Okay. Do, do we have those numbers for alcohol yet?
We are still working the alcohol delinquents. Um, so we don't have that number just yet. And it also exclu- excludes the insurance delinquents because that is, um, collected by the Georgia Municipal Association under contractual arrangement.
Okay. And then the Troutman Pepper report also referred to amounts from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. And they also said that, that due to the statute of limitations, that might be uncollectible. Do we have a number for twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen yet?
No.
Okay.
And again, you know, I, I would like for us to receive an official, official opinion. I guess I should say, I would like to receive an official opinion because, um, I just disagree with that amount as being uncollectible. Um, I mean, if you don't file a tax return in accordance with the state code, it's collectible.
So, ci- ci- city attorney, I, I know we had a, there was a difference of opinion last time this came up. Is there, I mean, I guess in theory, we could ask for the money and they could just not pay us. If they, maybe they've got the authority not to pay it, or what would be the next step to get a, a more exact answer on whether or not we can pursue the twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen amount?
Okay. Uh, Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, look, I just wanna draw the attention that, uh, when we did the investigative report, we had, did have the third-party auditing firm that also later was asked to do additional work. We don't have that detail. I don't know what was given them at that point in time, counsel. It was unbeknownst to counsel. We don't know. So, any of that information needs to be forwarded to the internal auditor. I suspect at some point in time, you know, when you're doing compliance, it's always, the auditor does his reports. It's up to the finance department or the auditor, oddity, to give all the information and report all the information and make all the corrections. It's not up to the auditor. So that's just compliant, auditing compliance one-on-one right there. Any of that information needs to be forwarded to the internal auditor's department. I'm sure there's things that will be discussed later in the audit committee, uh, and how they view things. I do wanna, uh, mention that it was said that the investigation went all the way back to sixteen, but evidently established, uh, the pattern over the course of time. We know there in that course of time that businesses went bankrupt, they went out of business, they, uh, we don't know who they are, uh, checks never got cashed, things like that. And that goes all the way up to, uh, this point of last year when we, we did the audit. So, and we're talking about, uh, samplings that were done during that timeframe of occupational taxes and alcohol taxes. There are other categories that we did not look into that you have to factor in as well. Uh, all these were samplings. I think a lot of the stuff that was said a little while ago, you're gonna need a lot, a lot of detailed information. You're gonna need a lot of work to, to really determine some of those things. Uh, that was stated to us by the investigative body of the millions that it would cost to do that. Uh, we chose not to do that, and here we are today. But I did wanna bring point, uh, to what was said about the confirmed businesses. Uh, um, we had not been doing audits over that period of time. Uh, that's in extremely important as well. Uh, I, I want, you know, I don't see anything, you know, it's a lot of talk in it seems like, but I don't see a lot of talk about automation and digitization and trying to, you know, the training aspect and the software aspect that we know that's used around the state, that it doesn't seem like anybody's having problems with that software. But getting to that level, we're not there yet. I don't see that here. But a lot of people have requested that. There's still some glitches. I've been getting people still calling me. For example, uh, people come in, they're not real sure of, of the current process, um, whether it's local, whether it's nationwide, and how to report revenue, and then get their business license and then pay their occupational taxes on that. Some have made mistakes on that, and then they ask, wait a minute, I made a mistake. They fill it out, they ask for a refund, but we're telling them, we're not gonna give you a refund. We're going to just mark it off next year when you come in next year. I, I don't, I don't know if that's the right way to do it, but, uh, and then there's still some reports of checks not being cashed, um, or let's just say put into the bank or deposited. Um, I'm sure that's all being worked on. Um, so I'm not gonna really really dig into that very deep. I'm sure that's, uh, all a part of the action plan. Um, I'm looking at the part about the personnel changes and all. I know that we're, it seems like it's stated that we're making a lot of pro- progress and we're collecting and lots going on, but, you know, it was always stated that we had critical staffing needs. But yet, we're making progress, but at the same time, it talks about needs in the twenty twenty-five budget, which tells me there's a gap in, in between there. I don't know how we're getting it done now and how we're catching up so quick. Um, that's not in this report, but it says that there's a note here that it may be challenging to recruit talent, temporary positions. That, that doesn't give me a lot of confidence, and I'm trying to understand that a little bit in this report. We, we talked about going out and contracting out with a third party. We talked about going out and, and maybe working with a firm to, to help us in this area. Um, I'm a little concerned there that we've got a gap. It seems like there's a gap in there, and I just wanna make sure that we're, we're making the right progress that we need to make. I, I know that the, uh, delinquency notices went out. I'm sure there's a lot of- I'm sure there's a lot of money coming in that now people, people know. But I'm also seeing, what is it, the end of March? April's here where expiration dates are up and it starts all over again. I know some people have sent in revenue in December, January, but that's about to start again. I just don't want to miss, you know, those steps and so we can continually progress here. And these are just observations, okay, that I'm, that I'm making.
So councillor Davis, in terms of some of your observation as far as the staffing, we do have in place all of our currently authorized technician positions, our licensed clerks. All of those positions are currently filled. They are, we also have the supplementation of some temporary staffing. So we have three temporary staff members that are also processing. So hopefully this renewal season, we won't experience those marked delays and those challenges because we have six people now processing licenses as opposed to two.
Okay. You've had a lot of change in that department and a lot of positions that are unfilled. I know you, I guess you're referring that you're using current staff or staff that you've had, and you've added three more. Are those just from other departments or?
Those are just temporary positions that the city manager has authorized. So we're using current staffing as well as the temporary staffing to process renewals. And to also implement some of these changes that we have put into place, such as our handling of mail and logging the mail that comes in and the return mail, handling some, addressing some of those things that were mentioned in the trial man report as far as us needing to put some, some attention on. So we have three authorized positions currently. All three of those authorized licensed clerk positions are filled. In addition to those three authorized positions, we have three temporary people that are helping us process. So it's a total of six people processing license renewals, assisting customers when they come in the door.
Three of them are new?
Three are new.
Okay, and you're making progress?
I feel like we are. I mean, up to week 10 of this year, we're up thirty-seven percent of licenses processed.
And it goes into the back and then from that level?
Well, as far as, I would be really interested in, in terms of saying, who is saying that we're not depositing the checks? Because checks are being deposited. All of the staffing, including the temporary staffing, know that we have three days to get those checks in the bank. There are some checks that we receive that have nothing to do with a license renewal. And sometimes it does take a day or two to process and log those checks because we have a manual process in terms of our, some of our excise taxes, particularly hotel motel and mixed drinks. One of the things that we're looking to implement this year by the end of the second quarter is transitioning to an online process for those excise taxes so that we're no longer receiving checks in the mail for hotel motel or mixed drinks.
And I will, I will state that some of these, you mentioned about the checks not being deposited. That might have been corrected. I just, it's been brought to my attention at the time, but those might have been corrected, I don't know. How about the auditing? You said it's going to be hard to, to address the auditing position, is that?
Well, I'm saying it may be hard to recruit the level of talent that we like to see with the positions being temporary. I'm not sure that I can convince someone to come from a permanent job to a temporary one. I mean, obviously, that's a personal decision for the individual. But I'd like to see these positions to be filled as soon as possible.
And so I think when, when she says temporary, the, the city manager has authorized positions. And, and those positions can't be, can't transfer from temporary to permanent until it goes to the budget process.
That's right.
And I think that's her point, that if the city manager says, I can go and hire this analyst. Well, when she goes and makes an offer, she's got to tell them, you know, I, I'm going to make this offer to you, but it's only good through June thirtieth or through the time the budget goes to the process. If the mayor and council approve it, then you're permanent. But if they say no, then I'm going to have to let you go. And so that's her, that's her challenge.
Okay, well, just make sure you get them into budget.
Well, I mean, they will be, but she just still can't provide a guarantee until the budget is approved.
All right, and the one thing it was brought up about going back in collection. We know what the statute of limitations are, and that's one of the, you know, that's going to have to be accepted. But we also know that there's been some. Trying to say this right. Maybe some indifference in how we collected amongst individuals, whether it's with penalties and fines, whether it's with COs, whether it's with other measures. It is a lot of stuff that's happened over the last four years and all the way back to sixteen. And, you know, as a council representative, I'm concerned about that because what that tells me is there's, on both sides of the equation, there may be issues. And they're trying to play catch up and just say it's just one side's fault. Comes across to me as unfairness and indifference in treatment of business owners or people out there with license. And, and that has happened. And often I catch myself saying, well, maybe we just need to clean things up and set a point and just clean it all up, let it go and start all over. Because that is a concern to me. I don't know how you can do that and treat everybody on equal ground.
Well, well, let me just say, I, I don't know why they went back to 2016. I mean, that's, why didn't they go back?
We, we did that because COVID.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is in 2016, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, in revenue, they did, they checked the boxes that were to be checked. In other words, you didn't come and get your business license. And a courtesy delinquent notice was mailed to you, is that correct? In those years?
Right.
And if you did not respond, it went over to codes enforcement in those years. Codes enforcement went and knocked on the doors.
How do we know this?
In the, it's, it's documented. It's documented, that's how, that's how you know.
The report didn't state it like that.
Well, that is documented.
The report stated that there were retired, people retired, key personnel retired, and there was a lack of enforcement.
That was for 2020.
Yeah, twenty twenty.
It goes all, we.
No, no, well, at any rate.
Right, I don't want to get into that.
From, I, I don't want to get into that either, but all of the information that I have is that sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, the boxes were checked, they were all done. And so where the failure came was twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And, and where they did not send out the courtesy delinquent letters and where they did not, finance revenue did not send the information when they didn't respond over to codes enforcement. Therefore, codes enforcement never went and knocked on doors. Twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, and then in twenty-three is when they sent out all these letters for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And so in line with your thought process, for, for me, I'm, I'm more focused on twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and not going back, because I don't understand why. So if you go back to 2016 and there's no statute of limitation, just go back to 2000. If we get a ruling that there's no, so, so you got to start, so, so I'm focused on, and that's why the information you see here is twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, and then twenty-four and looking forward. That's what I'm focused on.
We'll leave that alone, the, you know, we did that for y'all's behalf because it was stated that COVID was a reason for the fall behind. So we went back before then to get a good footing on, on a good plumb line on how long has it been going on? That's all I'm going to say to that, okay? But when can we become fully automated or automated in our systems?
Well, this, this is a thirty-day report, thirty-day, okay? We just wanted to give you an update. And so they are working with an I, with IT and others on automation. And they are working ongoing. And so the goal, I believe the date is 2025, January 2025?
For renewals?
Yeah.
But for access? It would be sooner. But that's also, to your point, councillor Davis, obviously finance, we're going to continue to work on resolving the license renewals through appropriate action, which would either be the issuance of a license, the follow-up to a problem letter or enforcement, enforcement action. And we hope to be complete with all of those, with that resolution for all renewals received prior to FY24, even in the April-May timeframe. It's going to take time, obviously, to develop and really sort of flesh out all of these processes. Like some of the changes that we've implemented are being, I won't say tested, but they are in the sense that before we put pen to paper and say, yeah, this is going to be the official process in terms of how we balance at the end of the day, we have to make sure that that's going to be a process that works. It has to be tested. But as far as the automation standpoint, we hope that we'll be able to move forward with automation, some automation, some form of automation prior to January of 2025, particularly for those excise taxes that I, that I spoke about.
Good, I just want to know the, you know, we, we know that automation is working. There's other communities and cities that are doing that. And, and it seems like they've implemented these systems pretty quick. And we may just want to check with some of these folks. And, and even, you know, we talked about working with the University of Georgia and utilizing their resources as well. I think that would be a great asset to be able to do that. I'm really concerned about, in that process, about the, the training aspect of it. So that was one of the things that was highlighted, being able to train people and get them used to that and adapted to it in order to use it. You know, you can have it there, but if it's not being correctly implemented and used, then it's, I mean, it's worthless pretty much. But I think my concern would be how, how are we going to get to that point? When and, and being able to continue to, to train the people to be able to use it in order to serve the citizens of Columbus?
Well, you know, from a training aspect, I will say that we implemented this system. Most of the permanent staffing that we have in place were, were trained on using the system. Training plans for the, for the benefit of newer employees are still being developed. I mean, at this point in time, training those newer employees is really the responsibility of the senior employees. I mean, I can't have, you know, some of my newer employees, you know, not processing things correctly. And I have a senior staff member that's been here fifteen, twenty years, not willing to assist. And so that is going to be, the training plan itself for the benefit of the new employees is being developed. We've received some information from the software vendor in terms of how-to processes that are already sort of developed. And what we'll do is we'll build on those processes in order to get our processes sort of fleshed out and, and written out.
All right, councillor Kogle?
Have we addressed, well, one, can you email this report to us? Because it's not on the agenda and it, or just get it updated on the agenda in general? I, I think if we had had it ahead of time, we probably could have addressed a lot of these questions over email as well as a shorter time, timeframe. But have we decided what we're going to do about the penalties and fees from 2023? I know we had put some, a, a hold on penalties and fees that expired December 31st, 2023. But then I'm sure, because I've been contacted by several people, that they were also still paying penalties and fees when they mailed in their business license after the date, but we had put it on a hold. So is there a way to go back and retroactively apply that fee to, or that credit to people's business licenses going forward? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not, there's not a line item to break out penalties and fees that have been applied to people's business license, correct?
There is.
There is? So we can, so we can go back and we can see on people's, on my business license and councillor Tucker's business license, if we paid after the date, how much? Um, I was fixatious, I just make it up. Who, if we paid after the date, what our penalties and fees are?
And as far as I know, I mean, I just want to point a clarification now. The penalty and interest was due up to the end of October. It was due up through November first.
Correct.
Yeah, what council waived was the accrual of penalties and interest for November and December.
Correct.
So if there were any penalties and interest that were applicable up to, to November first, those were applied. And if there was, so there was no calculation, should not have been any calculation to attach to penalties and interest, November and December penalty, uh, interest.
So if people mailed in their, their business license and they had done the math on penalties and fees, you undid that math and gave them a credit?
Undid that math and applied the payment to their account.
You didn't just mail it back to them and say it was wrong?
I want to say no, but unless you can give me a specific instance.
I, I mean, I'm just, I, I'm just, I've, I've gotten things mailed back to me before that says things were wrong. So I just wanted to be, just to be clear, all right, clear. And this, I know that we appreciate the, the up, the thirty-day update, but is, can we, instead of looking back thirty days of what we've done in the past, I, I think I would like to know, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I have a general feeling that we all would like to know what the plan is going forward in thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty days with suspense states. Instead of just, I think so often we sit here and we say, well, this is what we're going to do and we're going to, we're, we're going to investigate this software. And six months down the road, we're still investigating the software because we don't have a suspense state on what we're, what we're doing. So like in the next thirty days, we're going to be focusing on what our job descriptions are and, and making sure that our new staff is up to date on their jobs and responsibilities and who is doing that and who is doing the training and who is processing the business license. And within sixty days, we're going to have this new software or we're going to have these demos done within sixty days. You know, so that, one, so that we can follow along, so that when our constituents call us and say, hey, you know, what is the update in the finance department? Or when is this going to be automated? We can look at it and say, well, the anticipated, and I'm not holding you to a ninety or, or a hundred and twenty-day suspense date, but we can say, look, in, in ninety days, we should be at this mile marker. Right now, it's just, it's like glitter that we threw up in the air. And it's like, and we're hoping that it gets stuck on something.
Well, the plan of action that maps out those target dates that you mentioned, that was provided by the finance department to the city manager's office.
Okay, well, could you provide that to council?
Mayor?
I mean, we would like to know where we are in the finance department.
I have an administrative document that I'm dealing with, with them. And we can provide you some targets, but to tell you that we're going to train people on this day and.
With them and we can provide you some targets, but to tell you that we're gonna train people on this day and we're gonna do.
I'm not looking for a specific day. I'm looking for a thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty day plan.
We can give you that, but we, I'm not gonna give you the details.
Why not?
I'm not, cause I'm not gonna tell you when someone's gonna be trained. You know.
I don't need a specific day. I just need like thirty, sixty, ninety day or.
I, I just said, we can give you that.
Okay.
But it's not gonna be some of the examples that you used.
We'll, we'll get that.
Yeah.
We'll get that.
Some of the examples you used, it's not gonna be that detailed. That's an administrative document for me.
All right, well. I think we blessed off on the budget, so it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Thomas?
It's my recollection that, um. Ms. Ivy, and I'm sorry, I don't remember her title, was terminated on February the ninth. Has her position been advertised?
Yes, ma'am.
And when do we anticipate that there will be someone hired into that position?
Soon. Hopefully soon.
I'm sorry?
Soon, within the next couple of weeks, I hope.
You don't have a, an end date for the, uh, applications?
Uh, it's within the, the ninety days. I mean, the, the, the application is advertised as continuous. Uh, but the goal is to get that position filled as soon as possible.
Well, you gotta have qualif-, you gotta have qualified candidates. You're just not gonna go out and hire someone. So that's why it's continuous, because if you don't find anyone in ninety days, we're not just gonna hire someone. I mean, you know, they gotta meet the qualifications.
But I can tell you that the last two weeks, we've been conducting interviews for several vacancies within the finance department, so. We are working to fill the vacancies in the department.
It was, it, it would seem to me that the, the most important position to fill is the director of the department, but.
We all disagree with that.
The other thing that I wanna ask you about, you said that, um, in twenty, twenty, twenty one, twenty two. No letters went out. Uh, saying you have, you've missed the deadline. And also in those days, in those years. There was no communication with, um. Inspections and codes to go out and see, are these people still in, in business and, uh, what, what is the status? Uh, I'm, I am somewhat concerned that for three years, somebody. Should have known that those letters weren't going out and somebody else in the inspections and codes department should have known. We hadn't got anything from finance. Uh, that, that's a real concern to me and I'm not sure. Who is responsible for that, but I will tell you, Mr. City Manager, it's, it's a concern that we were, we went three years. With nobody asking, why didn't the letters go out and nobody asking, why didn't inspections and code get a list? And get it back to us. Um, it seems to me that those are two. Activities that are, um. Typical in the department. You said it happened in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, then when it didn't happen in twenty. And it didn't happen in twenty one, and it didn't happen in twenty two, and nobody seemed to, um. Question that, um, that's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you for this update. I, I'm listening to, um, my colleagues, colleagues around the table. And I, you know, I heard, um, city manager mention his concerns. One of the things, I know we're working on training. I will say, one of the things that I like that Director Rob Scott did was bringing in three sixty evaluation. Process. Are we actually, it's almost like you wanna make sure that you inspect. With a I, what we expect with an E. And because we have had some challenges, are we gonna create some type of evaluation process? To ensure that we don't get ourselves in a situation like we have gotten ourselves in. You know, that we've been made aware of.
Yes, the short answer is yes. Um, that also lends itself to the need for the additional personnel. Um, and getting the right personnel in place that can provide. The information that we need from a reporting standpoint where we can, um, be more accountable. I mean, in terms of the information that, um, is being communicated out of the revenue division to the finance department from, to, to the finance director, from the director. To the city manager and the council.
And I, and I think overall, and I appreciate, um, Director Rob Scott for this. He probably killed me for talking like that, but I remember. When we had the audit and that was one of the finances, um, or one of the items that was listed. In that is that, you know, they do a three sixty, um, evaluation process and it was something that. I honestly am concerned with as a city, that we should be doing evaluations, cause it does, as you said, keep us accountable. And instead of having all these questions, we can pull up the evaluations and see. Where we stand as a city, um, for all departments. So just making that comment, I know I've said it before like several times, um, but. I think that all of us get a lot of questions in different, you know, groups of people. And that's one of the things that they ask. Well, do, does the city have an evaluation, um, process or program? And. The answer that I know is no. I don't know if, you know, I'm, I'm.
Mayor.
Somewhat new.
We, we have on, it's not a three sixty, but there is, there's evaluations for rank and file employees. Division managers and managers through HR in its own land. And so you could have called me and asked me that question and I would have told you.
Well, I like talking here to talk.
Sure, I, I, I can see. I see that.
No, you can't see, cause I have not said too much today, but I wanted to bring it out that, um, that basically. We have some good steps. We're talking about review policies and procedures. And if, that's something that you're gonna work on, I think that'd be good.
But I was more so, in addition to the personnel, thinking about just from an overall performance of the division, each division and the department as a whole. Not more so personnel, but I guess.
And, and honestly, I would like to, to see if the city manager states that it's out there. Just send, um, the counselors a link, cause I, I don't know where it's located online.
And, and I can have HR director direct, uh, the counselor to that, to.
Counsel, Counselor Davis?
It's not for public view, no, I, I mean, it's, you know, but you can send her a copy. Yeah, print it and send it to her, yeah.
All right, let's.
Thank you, ma'am. It, it sounds like you, uh, you know, you're positive in that you feel like you're making, uh, making some ground. From, from the past that, you know, that there's progress being made. That's what I'm. Reading in between the lines as well, which is, which is good. The, the one thing that I would like to have counsel provide is from the day. The audit was requested after that point to the end of the year, can we get a? A, an amount, a total amount of what was collected during that period? In the, uh, revenue department, occupational, alcohol, all, all the taxes there, and then after. The first going into twenty twenty four to this period of what we've collected since the notices have gone out. To people to remind them to, uh, to pay their, to get their business license and to pay their taxes. Can I get those two numbers or tho- those two total amounts?
Well, the notice, which notices are you referring to, sir? Just to make sure that I'm clear.
The ones we just sent out.
The renewals?
Renewals.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the questions.
So are you, are you done?
Um, well.
Is that your last slide?
Really, this is the last slide. And I guess we really sort of addressed most of the topics here.
Okay, I think we've. I think the questions have been asked, and so we'll go on to the next, uh, we've got an infrastructure update, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Uh, good afternoon, um, mayor and members of council. This is just a infrastructure update on a lot of the projects that's going on. Um, in the city. Uh, they're really kinda all over the city and I'll just run through them. If you have any specific questions about any of those, I'm happy to address those questions. Um, starting off with projects under construction, we have a lot of resurfacing going on. Salmon Road Signal, River Road. Spiderweb, uh, Thirty Fifth Street and Villages on Cherokee, and I'll run through those, uh, quickly. Uh, we've done about twenty eight miles of roads. These are just some examples of restriping and resurfacing that have taken place, um, this past year. Uh, Salmon Road Signal is complete and is now open. Uh, River Road, JR Allen Signals and Lights, uh, have been installed and, and in place. Uh, the Spiderweb, the first phase roundabout and the Annette Avenue Signal is completed. We are out to bid for the actual bridge. Um, at this point. Uh, Thirty Fifth Street, Second Avenue Stormwater Relocation, uh, that is under construction. They're moving forward with that project. And then the Villages on Cherokee, uh, the wall repair, um, is almost finished. Projects under development, we have a lot of projects that are at some point in the process, uh, Fortson Road, Williams Road Roundabout. Thirtieth Avenue Signal, Tenth Avenue Signal, Military Drive, Infantry Road. First Avenue Sidewalk Project, Mott Screen and Nineteenth Street Flood Abatement. Uh, this is just, uh, the concept for the Fortson Williams Road, um, that will be starting very soon. This is. Uh, Robinson Paving. They also are doing the North Veterans Parkway Project as well as the I one eighty five Buena Vista, Diverging Diamond. So they'll be getting this project, uh, kicked off really soon. Uh, Military Drive, this is under design. This will connect the north-south, um, road from the Infantry Mu- Museum North. And then also Infantry Road, which will go, um. East to west, uh, connecting to that roundabout as well. Those are both projects that are under design. Uh, the First Avenue Sidewalk Project, this will connect, uh, the new, um, facility on, um. Second Avenue from the Housing Authority, uh, down to the connection, uh, by Mercer, uh, to connect that to the trail system. Mott's Green will start construction, uh, very soon. This is redoing that plaza area, uh, just north of the pedestrian bridge. Other projects under development, and we've had a dragonfly update, uh, recently. We're working on the connection at Lake Oliver, also the connection through Lake Bottom. Uh, we're also finishing up design work for the Eighth Street improvements, Seventeenth Avenue improvements, as well as the Thirteenth Street improvements. GDOT projects either under development or construction, as I mentioned, the I one eighty five, uh, Diverging Diamond at Buena Vista, that is under construction. Veterans Parkway from Turnberry into Harris County is under construction. They're doing a lot of clearing, uh, and North Veterans Parkway. Uh, the Warracoa Creek Culvert, um, that is finishing up soon and they'll start the resurfacing on Thirteenth Street. In the next month or so. Ogglethorpe Bridge is, um, under, under development. Uh, the River Road resurfacing, uh, Miller Road, Manchester Expressway Bridge is under construction. Uh, the JR Allen Manchester Expressway improvements, those are finishing up. Bradley Park at JR Allen, uh, Diverging Diamond, uh, that one is under construction. And then the I one eighty five Casita Road Interchange is also under construction. Do you have a few pictures for those of you who do not visit any of those locations, um, on a daily basis? Uh, this is the Warracoa Creek Culvert. Ogglethorpe Bridge, uh, that section that will be replaced. River Road resurfacing, uh, the Manchester Expressway at Miller Road Bridge replacement. Uh, the JR Allen Manchester improvements. The Diverging Diamond on Bradley Park at JR Allen. Uh, this is the, uh, design for, uh, the Diverging Diamond. The Casita Road Interchange Project. And these are the city managed, uh, Band One projects for T-Sploost. Steamwell Road is under design. They're working on the right of way plan, so that project's moving along, um, quickly. The River Road are repaving. A Riverwalk repaving, uh, that one, uh, we're waiting on the dragonfly to help us identify some of the. Major areas that need to be, uh, repaved. Uh, the Whitefield Road improvements has, is under design. South Lumpkin Road, uh, we're working on getting the agreement signed with a consultant after we had the Safe Streets for All. Federal funding that we received reallocated to a citywide plan as opposed to South Lumpkin Road. So that, uh, frees us up to start that project. Thirteenth Avenue, Seventeenth Street in Linwood, that project's under design. Uh, Liberty Theater Block enhancements, we're working on getting that agreement signed. And then the Fifth Avenue Connector, which is from Fourteenth Street down to Tenth Street to connect the Dragonfly Trail, uh, that is under design. These are the Band One projects that's being managed by GDOT. That includes the Buena Vista Road Corridor improvements. Uh, University Avenue, Andrews Road and Brennan Road, and those have all been assigned to a design consultant by GDOT. And so all of those projects are moving forward with design as well. Uh, just a few on the facility side update. Golden Park, uh, was approved by city council to move forward with that, so that project is. Moving forward, uh, there, there, we've had numerous meetings regarding Golden Park. We've met on site, uh, with the contractors. So that project is moving forward with the design, um, aspect. The Judicial Center, seen a lot of activity. We'll have an update specifically on the Judicial Center. At, uh, the next meeting, uh, the Sheriff's Administration Building. That will be ready for partial occupancy in April and then completed, uh, by July. Uh, the jail assessment will have a separate report coming back to council in April on the work that's been done on the jail assessment and how. We move forward with the jail, so that will be a separate report to come back to council from the consultants. Uh, Fire Station Number Five Replacement on Lynch Road. Uh, we have the donated property from Pratt Whitney on that project, and so we'll. Finishing up the design. That will start, uh, construction soon. And then you've had an update on the swimming pool replacement. We did. Received the approval from the Health Department, so more will be happening, um, expeditiously on the pools to get those ready as soon as possible. Other projects that we're working on, the Trade Center Parking Garage, uh, and that is a Sploost and a Bond project. Uh, City Hall Phase Two, uh, Sanovis will vacate the building, the Tower Bank Building on the corner. Um, which is the phase two of the City Hall project. They will be vacating, uh, in July, and so we'll start the renovations and. Move forward with the second phase of Phase Hall, of City Hall so that we're able to move in in March of next year. Uh, Carver Park improvements, this was a Sploost project, uh, they're working on getting, uh, all the designs completed for that, so we'll have. Projects moving forward at Carver Park. Uh, River Road Tower, uh, that is under design with Motorola and that will replace the tower on River Road. And. Yeah, yes, ma'am. That is for our nine-one-one communication, and there are, um, companies that actually lease space on that tower from. Your cell phone company, so that replaces that tower as well as the Liberty Theater. We're finishing up the specs to replace the roof. And also the HVAC and the remediation on the Liberty Theater. And happy to answer any questions about projects that are going on.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, mayor. I, I wanna go back to the, uh, River Road traffic lights if you. Uh, you don't have to.
You wanna go back, go back to the picture? You want to go back? Go back to the picture.
It talks about the traffic, traffic signals and lights. The, as far as the lights go, I look at that as a separate item. We've talked about that many times. Has there been paperwork submitted to the GDOT about getting their approval to move forward?
I think we've replaced the lights at the intersection.
No, we've talked about adding lights on their right-of-way.
We've talked about adding lights north of. We've talked about adding lights.
Both of those interchanges where they're extremely dark.
I think we've added those lights. You think it's still dark?
Streetlights, that's what it says. It says signals and lights.
Signals and Georgia Power has replaced the lights at that intersection. You think it's still too dark?
I don't think they have, unless I've done it recently. I'm talking about lights on the interchange. You'd have to get DOT's permission.
Right.
And submit the paperwork. Have we submitted paperwork?
Yeah, it's on River Road.
Well, they may have replaced those, but it doesn't reach over to the other side on the interchanges.
I'll get with you on the actual location. I don't know that we're talking about the exact same location. As far as, we did on River Road change out the lights. Are you talking about up onto the exit ramps?
We always talk, yeah, we talked about on the ramps, where you can't see to get on the ramps.
Yeah, right off of River Road, they have replaced those lights, but if you're talking further up onto the access ramps.
Both the interchanges.
Yeah.
I'll go by there tonight.
Okay.
Okay, the Fortson Road. We don't, do we have a start date on that?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we've talked to them. The contract is signed with Robinson, so they're, should be moving forward with their surveying and all of that.
I know we've already.
We'll get a start date from them.
I know we've already released that, and, you know, it does concern me if we're hiring people that, you know, that they're getting things done on a timely manner, but you think that they'll be starting soon?
They have indicated they will be starting soon.
Like within the next month?
They should be.
I don't know how many numerous reports I've put out about dates, and, you know, I don't. I don't want to be putting out false information, so, you know, I am concerned about that.
Yeah, I mean, the contract was awarded, the contracts are signed. They have specific number of days to complete the project, which they are aware of, so.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. And then the, I mentioned, has, have we sent some people out to check the area on River Road between where the new apartments go? Have you all taken a look at that? Have a chance to take a look at it? I know, I think I requested a referral on that.
Yes, Georgia Power has been in there, and we have, or Pam signed the agreement to add some additional streetlights.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Newman. Thank you, Deputy City Manager Hodge. Appreciate it.
Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Hodge, on that River Road apartment complex, as you are going, I've noticed it as I've driven north on River Road, there are several lights in that apartment complex right now that are blue. And when you first see them, it looks like a police car or sheriff's car lights. And I know that there is a, there's some kind of regulation about when you can use blue lights and when you can't use blue lights. Would you just have somebody check that out and see? It may be temporary, you know, until they get finished with the with the construction, but it's somewhat disconcerting as you drive up River Road and you see these two or three blue lights there, and you don't know, you know, what's going on and what to do and that sort of thing. So if you'll check it.
Yes.
I actually thought that maybe they.
You know, the first time we slowed down.
I did the same thing.
Until we saw that it was on a telephone pole.
I still do.
Yes, ma'am, we'll check that.
Counselor Davis.
Thanks, Mayor. Counselor Thomas jogged my memory on the matter. I'd like planning to get together, and a couple of developers have contacted me recently, and the reason I remember is because you brought up the apartment complex there. I guess the group out of Atlanta that's doing that apartment complex. There are many, many concerns, a lot of a lot of talk out in the community, but it is what it is. The land was zoned. There were no public hearings, and they did what they did. Now, in light of that, what, outside your urban areas, I would like planning. It was, I was approached that we need to really look at how we with our UDO and how we're going to move forward into the future with multifamily. A lot of multifamily seems to be stretching all over the place, but the concern lies around density per acre, units per acre. And I've been approached that there's a lot of developers, apartment developers, that are asking us now to consider reducing that number from twenty units an acre down even further. A lot of counties, a lot of cities are doing that around the state because what you're seeing right there on River Road, they maxed out on their units, and that concerns a lot of people. Well, that can be done by anybody. Usually our local multifamily developers are really, really good about that and sensitive towards, you know, the character of our community, but you're having a lot more. I think there's some other developments that are going through a zoning process now that you're going to have a lot of concerns. I'm not so sure that people coming in from the outside, you know, are concerned of what we are concerned about in our own community, so I would really like to start having that conversation at some point, and maybe engage in our local developers and understanding how we can make changes in the UDO to address that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So Deputy City Manager Hodge is wanting to stay there at the podium to do the ARP update.
So again, this is just an update on where we are with the funding that we received several years ago from the American Rescue Plan, and I won't hit a lot of this information. This is really just background information that it's really been in existence since 2021, and it was 1.9 trillion in funding that was direct aid of 362 billion to state and local governments. There are specific uses of how these funds can be spent, and City Council has approved the allocations of those funding. We did receive 78,482,038 dollars. We have expended 48,590,656.36. Encumbered, 13,581,247.31. Encumbered means there's a purchase order or a purchasing document entered, and we're waiting to receive that particular item, and then we have a balance of just over 16.3 million. The costs, we're coming up on the end of the eligible costs in which those must be incurred or obligated, which is December 31 of 2024. So a contract signed, a purchase order entered by the end of this year, and then expended or received by December 31 of 2026. So as I go through these, this was Phase One, the automation of the garbage collection that is complete, expended. We've received everything that we've ordered related to this particular item. Again, the ambulances, that has been completed, received, expended. On the Community Safeguard Programs, the Summer Youth, we've expended 240,000 of the 350, and the mayor will be launching again the Summer Youth Program that will expend the balance of these funds this summer. Cure Violence provided an update to you today. We've expended 300,000 to date out of 500,000. Phase One of the Camera Program is complete. Broadband Cyber Security Upgrades, that was a total of 3 million. We've expended 1.9 to date. An additional 333 has been encumbered. You can see the projects that are completed and the ones that are in process. Revenue Recovery, this was the allocation to provide funding to particular sources. That was completed through Phase One. And then also Premium Pay for Essential Workers was done, 3.7 million in Phase One. The Phase One Small Business, Nonprofit, and Tourism Grant Program has been completed. We did allocate funding for administration, which relates to the temporary employee that's assisting with the with the program of all the ARP funds. We've expended 189,000 to date. So on Phase Two was our second allocation. 12 million was for the Community Assistance Program. Affordable Housing, 3 million. That RFP is complete. The partners have been selected, and we plan to bring those agreements to council at the next meeting. Utility Assistance Program, 2 million. This has been a very successful program, partnership with Enrichment Services. We've served 2,137 households, assisting them with their utilities. That has resulted in assisting 4,489 individuals. The Homeowner Occupied Accessibility Rehab Program, which has been named HARP through Community Reinvestment, is 3 million. We're in the process of selecting qualified contractors, inspectors, and they'll be launching the application process very soon. Director Rob Scott will be coming to provide an update to council at the next meeting. Mental Health Training and Intervention of 750,000. We've expended 52,000, and another 152,000 has been encumbered. The Substance Abuse Treatment Services, we're working on how to expand those funds and what program will be utilized. That's 750,000. The Poverty Reduction Initiative, which is the agreement through United Way, that has been executed. We've drawn down 50,000 to United Way, and they are moving forward with that program. Family Connection of 500,000. This was funded through the Revenue Recovery Allocation, and we have four navigators. I believe they have three now, expended 69,000 to date. Public Safety, 3.1. The Gun Buyback Program, which I think they're considering maybe doing a different program with that funding, so that will be something we'll come back to council on. The Mobile Command Vehicle has been ordered. We expect delivery June of 2024. Chance has provided some preliminary pictures of that's really coming together. It's going to be a great asset for our community. The Police Department IBIS System has been encumbered, and the ambulances in Phase Two have been encumbered. The Judicial Backlog Program, we've expended 218,000 of the million-dollar allocation. Facility Improvements, 4.85 million. The Civic Center HVAC was approved by City Council on April 13. They're working on the specifications for the Trade Center HVAC, as well as the Liberty Theater HVAC replacement. We're looking at property for the land acquisition. It's actually property that we own that we'll be able to extend our cemetery space, and that is out in the East End, close to MTP Technology Park off of Chicago Road. There's a small site that we believe we can develop for additional cemetery space that we'll be bringing back to council for consideration. And then again, we had allocated administrative dollars in the second phase of 478,000. We're using up the first phase of that administrative funds before we start utilizing the second phase, but this is for that full-time temporary position that's in the Finance Department that's working on ARP and the reporting requirements for ARP. Revenue Recovery, 10.1 million. The CCG TV upgrades, that equipment has been ordered, so it will replace all the audiovisual equipment in the council chambers and in CCG TV. Cyber Security, 1.5. That's either expended or encumbered, so that is almost complete. Again, I mentioned the Family Connection. The revenue for that is the Revenue Recovery. Public Safety Capital of 7.6, so that was for pursuit vehicles for both the Police Department, as well as the Sheriff's Office, and then fire equipment for the Fire Department. They're moving forward with the Camera Program. There's a separate update today, so I'll let Deputy City Manager Elise Goodwin give you an update on the Camera Program, but that has been expended or encumbered, so that is moving forward as well. The State Fiscal Recovery Funds, we were awarded 4 million. We are coming down to the end of that program. At this point, we have served 87 small businesses, 2.6 million. We have 26 pending final approval, or we've requested additional information. We have a little bit of funding left, 284,000. On the nonprofits, we have provided funding to 10 nonprofits at 220,000. We have six that are pending final approval, or we've requested additional information. And our goal is to have that completed by the end of this fiscal year. And happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Thomas.
Deputy City Manager, do you recall what's going on at the old Farmer's Market down by Riverdale?
Yes, ma'am. So the Farmer's Market is being handled through the Community Reinvestment Department. Mr. Rob Scott is handling that. So we are taking on Phase One of the demolition to get that site ready. There is restrictions on CDBG funds on how much they can use out of their annual allocation for demolition, so it's Phase One in this fiscal year, and then we'll complete that up with Phase Two and Phase Three in the next two fiscal years from CDBG funds as they get that site cleared and we remove some contaminants from that site as part of that process as well.
So it'll take us about three years to get that cleaned up, and then does it become part of Riverdale, Portidale?
It is, has a restriction on it to be used for a public purpose, so we would.
I know there's been some conversation about doing that, and I just wondered where we were in that process.
Yes, so we're still working on the cleanup part. Again, it's slow because CDBG funds have restrictions on demolition. If we could find additional funding, obviously we could speed that demolition process up, but, you know, we're competing with other needs within the city for additional dollars, so we've allocated over the next two years with CDBG funds to complete that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Kogle.
Is the rest of that 16.3 allocated to something specific?
Yes, all of these projects that I've listed.
All right, okay, gotcha.
So, Mayor.
Any more questions, Counselor?
Oh, no.
Okay. That's all the questions.
Mayor Proton, the final update is on the camera.
I'm sorry, I think I've.
The final update is the Comprehensive Camera Program. Deputy City Manager Elise Goodwin.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity just to bring you an update of where we are on this program. On Phase One, it is 100% complete. And Phase One, of course, included the Parks and Recreation Facilities. We also have in the hands of our Public Works Department and the Police Department the High Crime Cameras and the High Illegal Dumping Cameras. Each of them have 20 of those cameras. On the Illegal Dumping Mobile Cameras, 13 have been installed at six different locations. We have a long list of areas in terms of illegal dumping that we're working, and we're moving these cameras around. They are looking, right now, we have 10 other areas that they're looking at in terms of installing these cameras. And we continue to work a route rotation schedule of over 100 repeat litter locations that we have. The list continues to grow, and as we place these cameras, get the footage that we need, we've even, of course, made some cases against some individuals who have littered that we have found, and they have been fined on these as well. And so. And so, as you can see, we've witnessed over twenty actual illegal dumping activities and some we're able to actually cite, some we were not able to cite, but we continue to watch these and make cases against individuals. On the high crime mobile cameras, there are twenty cameras as indicated. Sixteen have already been installed. They're holding four of these cameras out for special circumstances and they will place them where they see the greatest need. And so, of course, that's information that we can't share in terms of the locality of these cameras, but they are working very well. Phase one and two implementation, we are currently working both of those together. And some of the areas, of course, the way we were originally doing it was we complete phase one, go on to phase two, and then go on to phase three. Because of, in terms of some of the areas that we're working phases two and three, it may be some of three that we're doing versus number two, just because of the infrastructure that has to go in on some of these and whether it takes longer to do one than the other, but they're working together. We're working together on all of these. And all of the installs are looking to be complete by the end of this year, phases one, two, and three. Right now, we are, again, as you can see, those in red, the sheriff's office, those particular buildings, public safety buildings, health department, Metro, and then, of course, the civic center. And the ice rink on the inside has not yet been completed, but there are a number of those that have, as indicated. Parks and Rec facilities have been one hundred percent complete, Public Works, the outside of the civic center in the parking lot, Columbus Fire EMS, Public Works, again, and the trade center. Those have been completed and so we're pleased to announce that. We are hopeful and, you know, there are still a number of facilities that need these cameras. We have not talked about a phase four, but we hope to at least have that discussion about a potential phase four. There are some interest in placing these cameras in the various parks, on the outside and the parking lots throughout the parks. Right now, we do have them some in Lake Bottom and in Carver Park, but we want to look at what that cost will be to place them in other parts outside of just the interior of the building and on the outside of the building because they are needed and we see that it works in terms of having these cameras. So that is where we are in terms of the update for comprehensive camera program. Any questions?
Mayor, I would just come in and say the cameras are working and I want those listening to know that the cameras are working and whether you live in Alabama or out of state, you're not going to get away. And I want to commend the assistant chief because I took photos of someone from Alabama and Assistant Chief Kennedy tracked him down in no time and got cooperation. And so, just because you're in Alabama, when we get you, we're coming to get you. So, and we're asking the judges for the maximum fine for a thousand dollars. And I went to court, personally went to court on one that we saw and took pictures. I went to court and Judge Henderson fined them one thousand dollars. So, take your, you know, take your chance, but we're coming to get you.
That's, the cameras are, they are working. And I know that our law enforcement personnel have been able to make a variety of cases and the technology that we have, there's some of the same technology that exists in Alabama, so they communicate and they can kind of work with each other to try to make sure that those, those folks that commit that crime are going to end up getting caught. Counselor Thomas?
I would suggest too, this is city manager, and you may already have done this, but as you know, the school district and some of the private schools in Columbus have mounted cameras to record people going through the school districts. And it may be that as we continue our camera locations and they continue their camera locations, there can be some cooperation between those, those cameras. I know that, I know that the St. Luke cameras between eleven, on Third Avenue between Tenth and Twelfth are on all day because they have kids going across the street all day. Some of the others are only on during morning time and dismissal time. But I think if we could work those, those two systems together, it would be even more. And we could tell those folks, don't, don't come over here, we're going to put you in the, we're going to get in your bank account, don't do that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Counselor Craft?
This isn't about cameras, so I can, I can wait until.
You're the last.
Okay.
I do want, so I'm finished. I do want to just remind you also that if you see someone littering, I had just a week or so ago, someone, a car in front of me, literally the passenger is throwing out trash. I took a picture of that car, that tag, sent it immediately to the chief. They were able to track them down and to cite them for littering and a thousand dollar fine. So I'm just saying, public, anybody, if you see someone, please just take a picture of it, of that tag number in that car, they will take care of it. I mean, it was just, I mean, like it was litter, like just, you know, confetti, a whole lot. I was like, wait a minute, no. So I took a picture and he took care of that. So if you see that, please send that in.
I had actually pulled over a dump truck on River Road. He got at the red light, so I kind of pulled up in front where he couldn't go and I got out banged on his door.
Yeah.
Because he, they didn't have it covered. There was boxes and stuff flying on River Road, so I told him to go back, pick that stuff up and get the top secured before we drive. He did, he turned around, went back, got it. Citizens arrest, Barney five. I said it very politely.
Thank you.
Counselor Craft?
Thank you. About a year ago, we approved some spending for, I think it's the heritage apartments, those little Easter egg apartments. There was like four, I thought it was four hundred thousand or something for repairs. I think.
In the Liberty District. Yeah, there was, we had termite issues and.
Okay, can we get an update?
Legacy terrorists.
Legacy terrorists, thank you. I just call them the Easter egg apartments. Could we get an update on how that all went down?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Kogel?
I got two, two things today. The Metro Roll With Us program that's going on downtown, I think there's, and I, and I think it's a really great program and it has a lot of potential, but I think, and I really want to see it succeed, but there are some concerns that are going on with it downtown with, not with, not with like personnel or anything, but one with the branding that's on it of, no one knows what it is and it just says Roll With Us on it instead of Free Shuttle. And so, some, often, and I'm down there quite a bit, I see them just sitting on the side of the road and several business owners have reached out and they've talked to some of the staff and they don't seem super busy. And I think that there is a little disconnect of what it is to visitors and because it, it looks very similar to the bid, like the bid vehicles. And so, if we can adjust, I don't know if we just have to wrap it with, that says Free Shuttle instead of just Roll With Us and possibly put up some QR codes around instead of pamphlets, because nobody's picking up the pamphlets. And the website is not consistently working and it's, I know we've got a, I know we have a QR code on our website, except for that most of the people who are accessing the QR code on the website are looking at it on their phone and it's impossible to scan, scan QR code from your own phone.
Yeah.
So, there's, I think it can be wildly popular, it's just our message is not, we're not aligning with the generation that needs to use it or wants to use it, so.
And, and thank you for that. We have talked about much of what you have mentioned because some of them have mentioned those things to us, but we also see that, again, there are some bugs that we're working out as we speak. We know that we're going to be putting more information, some of the large banners on the parking decks that talk about, you know, Roll With Us, Free Shuttle, and the large QR code on the vehicles as well. So there are a number of things that they're currently working on to make it a little bit more user-friendly.
Even, even QR codes on the sidewalk, you know, the sidewalk stickers, there's just this, there's just this disconnect that, I mean, I see them and I wave them at them. I mean, I walk, but.
Yeah.
And, and I think it'd be good to say Free Shuttle.
Yeah.
But I attended the clerks conference a couple of weeks ago. Madam Clerk Sandra Davis, they hosted this regional conference and they couldn't stop talking about Roll With Us, Madam Clerk, at the conference. I guess they were all using it to go from Marriott uptown, so that somebody must have told them about it.
Hotels.
And I guess the hotels may be promoting it, but, but they were just, they had never seen anything like it and they were just.
I mean, I think it can be really great and, and I think there's maybe a disconnect of, you know, what the places are named now of Uptown and Highside and just to make sure everybody's on the same page.
We can work on that.
And then my other, other area of concern, and I'm going to try to be kind here and factual, but there, there's a lot of frustration that's going on and I'm having a lot of frustration with this and I know that fellow counselors and the community are having frustrations with this and it has to do with animal control. And there's, it's just not really, we have a breakdown of, of communication somewhere, you know, as of the last week and a half or so, it's, the conversation has been with the software and I know Counselor Begley might have a little bit to add to this. And we have a temporary fix right now online, but it is definitely not mobile friendly. When I pull up animal control on our, on my phone and try to access the animal control website, it is a strip of, it is, it is not mobile friendly. It's, it's just a strip of words that are like two words per line and it goes on forever. And when I'm trying to access that PDF that is on there to indicate, as our, as our temporary fix, to indicate what dogs we have on stray hold or we have on, that are adoptable, that PDF is too small to read unless I, unless I print it out or if I'm looking at it on a desktop. If I'm looking at it on desktop, it's okay. But, again, I think most, I think I looked it up the other day, it's like ninety-seven percent of Americans have a phone and only sixty percent have a, have a desktop computer. So most of our people are looking at our page off of a, off of a phone. And so, there's this frustration between, that's mounting between our management and our citizens and it's not getting us where we need to go. And it's as far as, you know, we've had a very extended animal control update over to the last two council meetings and, and we've heard from Dr. Hall and about vaccinating dogs and about our spay and neuter program. And I'll be honest, I have adopted two dogs in the last four, four months from animal control and both of those dogs have been unvaccinated from the vaccination reports that were, well, fully vaccinated, I should say. So I think when Dr. Hall was here, he said that he personally vaccinated all, all dogs with three vaccines and the dogs that I have only have two vaccines and one was not, came without rabies vaccine. And my last dog that I adopted about two months ago now is also unaltered. And I, I did ask upon adoption if, you know, I was given the, the spay and neuter paperwork and I did specifically ask what happens if I do not spay or neuter my animal. And they said that they would send me paperwork within four weeks and follow up with a phone call. And I have, I mean, now granted, the dog that I adopted could not be spayed or neutered immediately because he was sick, but I have yet to this date to have any communication from animal control on altering that dog. And if, if I don't have any communication and we have a spay and neuter issue in Columbus, Georgia, and we have a animal control that is over, overstocked, for lack of a better word, overpopulated with, with dogs, then, and we are not following through with a simple ordinance of spaying, neutering and showing up and making sure that those dogs are spayed or neutered, then we are basically just kicking the can down the road and we are not doing anything to solve our own problem. And so, there is a breakdown somewhere where, and, and we can, we can try to blame it on staffing, but it's a, it's, it's a, it's a simple follow-up. And so, I, I think we really need to look at what is going on because we're not helping ourselves. We're actually creating a larger problem the longer we go on down this. And so, I know, I know we, I had touched on the software issue and that's, I feel like kind of the tip of the iceberg. I don't know if Counselor Begley wants to, to say anything about it, but, you know, we've been trying to get this software, we've known that this software was going to expire a year ago, or we knew that our Lotus was going to expire a year ago. And we've been talking about reviewing the software since the beginning of December and I feel like we're not anywhere closer other than just having a temporary fix to a problem that's mounting. And so, we can't get rid of dogs because we can't get people to come and check if their dogs are being, were picked up and we can't spay and neuter our dogs, so we're, we're just, it's not working. So I don't, I think Counselor Begley might want to say something further to that. Those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Begley?
We're fortunate to have Counselor Kogel dig into these real world questions and personally speak to her experiences and identify the shortcomings from a user experience. I do have more questions about the software, because I know we were trying to get that comparison for a couple of months and then we got it, but then we had some follow-up questions that we raised in that meeting. I don't think we've seen an update to those questions yet. I saw some emails, but just kind of like, I saw an email about the customization, but not the other two data points, but I'll, I'll continue to follow up with that and so hopefully we can get that one hundred percent clear.
Well, no doubt, I mean, we have challenges in animal control. We do today, we did ten years ago. And, and so, they are obviously working on the software issue that you mentioned. It seems like I signed an agreement or something yesterday for some software. It was, I can't remember the name of the company, but I signed something yesterday.
Shelter Love?
Shelter Love.
Okay.
Yeah, I signed that yesterday, that they would move forward with that. And so, in the meantime, I know that IT has been working with animal control on use of website, in the meantime, to, that people can go on and, and see the animals up for adoption or lost animals, whatever. They've been working with IT, I know, during the last week. the last week. And I think that's up and running through our website. But, but that was a temporary fix and I guess with Shelter Love, what I signed yesterday would be the permanent fix for software, I, I assume. I don't, they're not here today and I don't have...
I mean, that's, that's, that's very helpful. I mean, I think that, that...
Animal first. Animal first, it was, yeah, animal first. Okay, that I signed yesterday.
Okay.
And, and then I, I heard what you said and we'll, I'll look into not being mobile friendly, too small to read on cellphone, all of that, I don't, you know, we'll, we'll look into that.
Sure.
But I, I hear your concerns, I hear the concerns of those who are writing you and, and copying me and, and, and so, I know staff, I, I'm sure in their budget request, they've asked for staffing, which you've encouraged them, you, the council members, to ask for what you need in staffing. And so, you know, we'll, we're going to approve and send some staffing requests forward in the budget process. But it's something that we just got to continue to work on. We're not there yet.
Yeah, and, and I'm, you know, and I'm not entirely sure that Facebook should be our method of communication with the rest of Columbus. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, but it just seems like we've cut off all sorts of, we, we've cut off our communication with, with the community and so, you know, it's, it's, we have the potential to be, I, I really do think that we have the potential to be a no-kill shelter, well, we're not anywhere close to that. But, you know, the, I think if we learn to work together and it's less combative, that we can, we can get closer to that goal.
I agree with that.
But part of being less combative is opening up communication lines. So, someone has to take the first step and I know that some of, like, some of council has reached out to people who have reached out to them and, you know, and explained that and, and I think it's a, it's a two-way street and so, if people are listening, you know, be less, be, show a little bit more grace to animal control and, you know, CCG, show more grace to our citizens.
I agree.
So, thanks.
Okay.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right. Madam Clerk, your agenda?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's Agenda, item one is a resolution excusing Counselor Garrett.
Motion to approve items one and two. Motion to approve items one and two. Any discussion on either of those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, they're approved.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an add-on resolution to excuse Counselor Huff from today's meeting.
Motion second on the resolution excusing Counselor Huff, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Excused.
Item number three, this is an email correspondence from Claire Mitchell.
Motion to approve item three. Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Item four is an email correspondence from Attorney Sly. He's the Board Secretary to the Hospital Authority of Columbus. They're requesting that the seat of Ms. Cynthia Williams Jordan be declared vacant.
No, that was another one from the Uptown Thessade Board.
Yes, that was the seat of...
So, there's a motion and a second to declare a seat vacant for the hospital authority. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion second to receive the minutes. Any edits anybody would like to offer up? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments. We have the council appointment that's ready for confirmation and that's the Commission on International Relations.
All right, motion and a second to approve Ms. Russell.
Ms. Anna Russell, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? She is approved.
Item seven, we have council district seat appointments for the Community Development Advisory Council. We have council districts seven, districts two and three. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations would be listed for the next meeting for the Animal Control Advisory Board. We have the seat of Raymond Culpepper. This seat is open for nominations, he's eligible to serve another term. We're waiting to hear back from Mr. Culpepper to determine if he's still interested in continuing to serve. We also have Courtney Pierce, this is a Post-Human Society representative and Counselor Kogle is renominating her to serve another term. We'll bring this back at the next meeting. We also have the seat of Sabine Stoll. This is the animal rescue representative. We received these recommendations from an animal rescue group and so, we're waiting to hear back from them. She is not eligible to serve another term. And Counselor Garrett is nominating Ms. Ethelyn Riley for a seat on Animal Control Advisory Board and we will identify that seat at the next meeting and bring that back. Next, we have the Columbus Aquatics Commission. We have the seat of Bruce Samuels, this seat is open for nominations. The Corporate Extension Advisory Board, the seat of Helen Williams, it is open for nominations. The Personnel Review Board, the seat of Dr. Shanita Pettaway, this seat is open for nominations. This is the alternate member seat. We have the Tree Board, the seat of Frank Tommy, it is open for nominations. This is the Residential Development Seat. Next, we have upcoming board appointments. We have the Development Authority of Columbus, this is council's appointments, and we have the Housing Authority of Columbus and this is the mayor's appointments. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we've had a request to go into executive session to discuss litigation and potential litigation, property acquisition and/or disposal. All right, so I need a motion to go into executive session. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All right, we are in executive session, we'll have to clear the chambers. All right, we have been in executive session and there were, we were discussing potential litigation, litigation and land procurement...
Real estate acquisition.
Real estate acquisition and disposal. No votes were taken. Mr. City Attorney?
All right, Mayor, I'm going to call up a group of resolutions, we need a vote on each one. First one up is a resolution that will settle all claims of Cassandra Martin Hutchins for a total of forty thousand dollars from an accident September twenty-six, twenty-three.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
All right. Next one is a resolution settling all claims of Mary Milner for a total of forty thousand dollars from the accident occurring September twenty-six.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that settlement's approved.
All right, the next one is settling all claims of Latonia Palmer for seventy-seven thousand dollars, accident May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion second to approve that settlement, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
All right, and the last one, Mayor, is authorize settlement of all claims of Willie Lawrence for forty-five thousand dollars, November two-twenty-two accident.
Motion second to approve, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
That's all.
That's all? All right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. All right, we are adjourned.